All right, we will go ahead now. It's eight o'clock, close enough there. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order.
Mayor Holland.
Here.
Mayor Proton Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Brownlow.
Here.
Commissioner Sanderson.
Here.
Commissioner Sawyer.
Here.
Commissioner Wooton.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number three be the adoption, excuse me, adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt?
Submove.
Commissioner Sawyer, with the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Welcome and intro. Matt, you're up, sir.
Good morning, Chuck. So what we've done today in moving back into this space, just so everyone's aware, we have our department heads and assistants that could be here with us today. We try to keep that U or circular shaped configuration, and everyone has a name tag. And then when one of the team members are called upon to answer a question, if you'll just give them a little bit of time so that we can have a microphone that will bounce between them, so whatever we're recording or live streaming, that the audience will be able to hear their answers as well. So, good morning and welcome. This is day number one of our two-day annual retreat. We just want to go through our standard house cleaning measures. And it's difficult for some of our LEO and firefighters. They do receive emergency text messages, so for the rest of us, we're going to try to lock out and leave our phones down. We're just going to be professionally courteous to one another. And Mayor Holland, in front of you, do you have a red card like in soccer?
Yes, sir.
All right, so that red card, what we've offered that up again to the elected officials to utilize. If you feel like we're on a topic or a subject that is wandering or going off the path, one courtesy way to bring that back in, if you want to go ahead and halt that conversation, is throw up your red card. We'll check in with you. And if you want to put that idea on the parking lot, that's something that you can either come back later to today, tomorrow, or even at a later meeting. We'll check those conversations because we want to be courteous and respectful of everyone's time. So the Board of Commissioners have voted today to have an eight o'clock AM start, and we're already out of the gate on time. We're going to try to conclude by 12:00 PM, but that's flexible to you. It's not that we need to stay here till noon, but we all have blocked out that time for you as well. So with that being said, what we wanted to do was start this morning with an exercise. So before we go any further, are there any questions from the board or any other ideas or changes you want to make to today's process? Awesome. We can hear a pin drop, so exciting. We're going to start the conversation with a rearview mirror, if you will. So what I'm going to do is deviate from where I'm standing and make my way over to this large sheet of paper that the staff has put together. So we went through an exercise, and we've done this before. We want the board to think about what you've accomplished in 2024. This is your first year seated together. Twelve months ago today, you set out on a path, talked about some things that you wanted to accomplish, and we have some listed on this board. And then this is a blank sheet for you to think about if we've missed anything. So, from a staff's perspective, when we went through the exercise that we did before where we would throw out ideas, we'd jot them down, I'm just going to help you, for the sake of time, rattle off some of the things that staff felt that they were pleased with, either performances by their department or from across the team. We were able to purchase a brand-new VAC trailer for Public Works that helps with stormwater. We have an increased number of medics, which went from two to approximately 16 on the team of 26 on the Fire EMS side. We have increased site visits and planning. I think we were over 700-plus site visits in 2024. A big conversation starter is the completion of the new gym floor that you financed and funded. This is the 11th consecutive year of our GFOA, Governmental Finance Officers Award for Excellence, so Laura is now rocking on the 11th time. We have applied for as a group and received multiple grants specifically from the North Carolina League of Municipalities, both in fire, PD, and parks. We have quite a few things coming out of those grants. The improvement of Fire Station Two, the contract is in position, and with a design build at $3 point X million, so $3.1, $3.2 is what we're targeting for. The PD was very pleased, zero traffic fatalities again in 2024. Planning Department updated and improved and launched their iWorks portal to the community. EIPD updated all their sidearm handheld weapons. HR, we rolled over to Aetna. We made a switch with our health insurance, which helped expand the platform and accessibility for our staff. Planning and code enforcement, bike and ped path improvements. EIPD's MiFire, their wireless connectivity. Greg helped us do that and then increase the connection point and the strength for officers while they're doing their job. Finance cost recovery, there's a whole series of things we'll talk about today. The USLA InBevo certifications for our lifeguards. Planning Department with our CRS five-year recertification went through. EIPD's successful shop with a cop again. Parks and Recreation, this is a combination project between Public Works Assistance and the Foresight for Parks and Rec, which started quite a while ago when we were doing our ARPA fund planning, but we were able to save a substantial amount of money by rebuilding those bridges with in-house power, and Public Works helped us do that with in-house labor. And Public Works also improved our connectivity to your stormwater pumps, which used to be single-phase overhead, now they're three-phase and underground, which helps with the redundancy at storms. EIPD, five certified car seat inspectors, is that correct? So now if you have a car seat, little people, anybody in the community can come here, and we try to have somebody on almost all times that is certified with car seat inspections. Parks and Recreation, 50% of the way of our goal on walkways. We had 14 to do, 13 that were funded by FEMA 428, one that was by gracious donation, and we are 50% of the way with seven of those 14 complete. The other seven are scheduled to be done by May or earlier. Parks and Recreation created their scheduling app. PIO, public announcements about safety were really ramped up again this year. We'll share some of that with you later in the two days. New kayak launch, improved Christmas lights. Our new town clerk received her HR certification, so that was powerful, and she's continuously taking class and enhancing her capabilities. FEMA generator pumps. So we have our pumps that are out in the field, and we utilized FEMA 428 funds at no cost to the community to place seven standby generators, 30,000 KW per unit. They are propane-fed and have an operational timeframe between 96 and 116 hours, depending on the scope of that pump. The EMS saves, tremendous number of saves. We'll let Chief address that later in his conversation. Another successful sold-out junior lifeguard program. Congratulations to Mark Cruz, who helped Emerald Isle receive some very powerful recognition of our NC-3C award for increased public communication. PD vehicles, we have a conversation there. PTC number eight. It was an unnamed storm, due to the fact that we were able to grab Mark Cruz, partner up with Ryan Davenport, and go and fly the beach. I was in a FEMA meeting on Thursday. We may have the opportunity to recover up to $25 million in lost sand that wouldn't have been recoverable without our drone program and PIO on staff. NC DOT helped us with rescheduling our signals to help with traffic flow. A successful and safe St. Pat's Festival, another successful marathon with a great amount of money donated, which puts us to what total now for the lifecycle of the marathon? You've donated close to a lot of money, so I put him on the spot. It's early. EIPR, the tennis court rehabilitation, which included fencing, court surfacing, back netting, increased seating, increased signage, improved lighting, and new cameras on the way, which are all a part of a grant for the cameras. Brush truck, EIPR Public Works brush truck. Helene support, where we sent a series of team members out to the west, and we also did it locally with our volunteerism business owners and just general community. The PIO Native Plants video, very well done, large success there. Crosswalk flags, which we installed, Parks helped us do that. We modeled our other communities on the other end of the island and put in those orange crosswalk flags. Fire Department's RMS system, which helped save a lot of money, and our team was very instrumental in that, so we want to thank the Fire Department. Our FTE vacancies currently, we had one person graduate out of the PD to go pursue an alternative educational career. We have one vacancy, we're backfilling, and I think we have one in fire today. At the last count, we had already had moved seriously ahead in our conversation with the USLA Certified Lifeguard. Swim testing and applications are in process, very early, being it's only January. So that says a lot about both HR and then fire. Again, the car seat check opportunities for PD. We also did a rehabilitation of both external and internal bathrooms at Parks and Recreation, both outside of this facility and interior at the community center. The finance grant funds closeout. Laura would like Pink Floyd's Money, Money, Money to play while she speaks today because she has been responsible for helping us procure, monitor, and bring in close to $12.5 million over the last 16 months we've worked side by side. Planning's quarterly report to CAMA went in on time. Planning's one-year recertification, and PIO has helped us monetize Facebook. And then we also have the successful multiple-year run now of the EIPD Car Show, which flows right back into Shop with a Cop. So those are the things that staff listed. I'm sure we've forgotten. What we want you to do is each of you has a uniquely colored marker on the elected officials. We want to take 10 minutes. We want you to come over with your marker. The reason you have a uniquely colored marker is we want to know what Commissioner Wooton finds to be the most important. We want to know what Mr. Taylor thinks is the most important. And then if we forgot something, because I'm sure we have, if you think of something else that you were responsible part of, partook in, and you want to make it up here on the list of what you think was successful in 2024, with your colored marker, we'll know who brought that idea up. And then if you see somebody else write an idea, you can put up their printed newsletter, the cafe newsletter, you can checkmark that, and then anybody else that finds that to be of high value will have you checkmarked. So we're going to go ahead and take a 10-minute opportunity here, if you will. We'd ask the six elected to come up, just put a tick or a dot in color coordination. You can vote once, you can vote for every single thing. What we're going to try to capture is your top 10 ideas. So if at least if you can put up 10 dots for us, that would be very helpful. And then again, anything that we failed to list, if you want to put up here what you thought you've done extremely well as a commission, as a team, as a town in 2024. So we'll take 10, is that okay? All right, so we'll ask you to go ahead, and we'll have our team vote, and anybody needs to stretch or get a second on breakfast or get your coffee, we'll go ahead and roll into that. Thank you.
Good choice, Mark. Especially me, it'll be for the captain.
Ah, I did go out just painting. I went in, so hang so much stuff on the walls constantly unveiling, so I haven't gone there. Fill the holes, repaint it.
Some old new color?
No, I did the exact same colors I had out there, man. Did it to make it easier on the painter.
It's fun to volunteer, bring a boat for you, fly boats, bait and tackle, take the vet station. It is a tournament, there's no money involved, just prizes involved.
Who is it?
Do one May and October, so be another one mid of the year.
I think you won, Laura.
I thought it was a competition.
Well, thank you all, appreciate that. For those of you that are up front and you have a binder booklet, staff-wise as well, you should have had an individual sheet of single page, eight and a half by 11, and has picture of a pursuit vehicle on it, a Tahoe. If you'll open your booklet and you want to put that, put that behind the PowerPoint in tab six. So if you flip either open tab six or open tab seven, that goes behind Chief Panzarella's presentation on PD vehicles. So again, if you want, put that tab unit in there for the PPD behind tab six, that would be great. All righty. So what we see is you'll have an opportunity to take a peek at that chart throughout the day. And staff, I'd encourage you to look at that as well, so that'll help us determine where council's priorities rely on what they're finding to be highly valuable successes in 2024. And what we're going to do over the next four hours this morning, and hopefully into tomorrow, is try to determine what the priorities will be for 2025, 2026 budget cycle. So this will help us get through the remainder of this budget, which you have a little over five months left. But keep in mind, you're really targeting what you want to accomplish basically from July 1 to June 30 of next year, because you need to figure out the task, figure out who you want to assign it to, and then how you're going to fund that initiative if it's anything different from the norm. So with that being said, we're going to continue with our look back of what we have accomplished in 2024 as a staff. So Mark has up on the PowerPoint slides our year in review numbers, and we're going to go ahead and move through these, just as an identifier of what was accomplished over the last 12 months and through this first half of our cycle period in the budget. So we know that everyone here in this space and place serves and works for the voters of Emerald Isle. They've elected that good-looking group in the center. Those six people are the decision-makers that helped set the course, set the tone, and give us direction as a staff. I am the one employee employed by that group of six people, and then we have these departments that respond and report up into that council manager form of government. The Emerald Isle Full-Time Police Department, the Fire and Combined EMS, including Ocean Rescue, our Public Works Division, our Parks and Recreation, which also includes our Parks Maintenance Team, our Planning and Zoning Staff, our Public Information's Department of One, our Human Resources Department of One, and our Finance Department of 1.25 to 1.5, depending on day of the week, as we have two part-timers that are helping us there with accounts payable, and one that also helps give us a redundancy while we're doing payroll every two weeks. Following are the numbers. This reflects the period of 2024, so this is for the last 12 months. This would be a snapshot looking directly back. So your current employee list has 73 full-timers. That's what's currently in your budget booklet. 123 part-timers that helped get us through the season. One thing that's important, as we've talked about institutional knowledge, we've talked about change, and basically this entire front table is new, excluding Chad Edwards. Billy Mathias was moved up in position, so all these people, well, actually, he moved up too. So all these faces have changed on the front table because you had a Fire Chief of 36 years, an Assistant Fire Chief of 36 years, a Parks Director at 30-plus, Public Works Director at 30-plus, a Fire Captain at 30-plus, a Police Chief at 25, an Assistant Police Chief, a Police Captain, a Police Sergeant, a Parks and Recs Maintenance Employee, and a Town Clerk, all with 20 to 36 years of experience, and those folks have retired out in the last 60 months or less. Round of applause for those that have filled their shoes, though. These guys are doing a great job. Finance Department. Finance Department staying stable, holding it a decade. Anybody would like to let the air out of the Jeep tires or just lock Laura into the room, that would be wonderful. The Finance Department now with a budget of $14.2 million, a current property valuation of $3.2 billion, and I want to slow down there and ask everybody to take stock in that number. The current value is $3.2 billion, and what you're going to find out in Laura's presentation that will not be the proposed value coming from Carteret County within the next 90 days. That number, spoiler alert, is going up. The GFOA award, as we indicated in our list of cool stuff, 11 years in a row of quality of excellence in financial documentation, reporting, and guidance. Our EI vehicles currently consist of 62 maintained vehicles, of which two are down, a blend of owned and fleet units to keep us moving. Our fleet program this year had a pushback of $37,000 in cash that came back to Emerald Isle over the last 12 months through the Enterprise Fleet Program. Our surplus sales generated almost $90,000 in equipment that we helped to keep clean, maintain, and then sell for a premium, either on GovDeals, Facebook, or a combination thereof. So that 90 and 37 brought back a little over $127,000 into the coffers of Emerald Isle to keep our maintenance program flowing. The Fire Department's stats, I'm not going to steal his thunder because he'll cover some of this in his presentation, but Chief Mathias and their team, we want to thank Assistant Chief Coffey for being with us here today and tomorrow. This is what has been accomplished over the last 12 months. Over 1,500, almost 1,600 calls for service by the Emerald Isle 24-Hour Fire Department, of those which 937 were EMS calls, 20 fire calls. You can see how mutual aid has been both up and down. We have reported in years past of 50 to 60 calls each direction, so this year, fortunately, the severity of calls has reduced the number of both mutual aid given and received. Total transports, this is what's critical. You know that we have an issue with an ambulatory unit that is down. We have transported over 584 patients, of which one had a very rough accident in Moorhead. We're still working on getting that unit repaired and back into service, and we want to thank Western for their current loan of what they've provided us. Inspections of 454. This is a key one, Ocean Rescue incidents, 97 people in the water that we've helped. And then fire losses totaling a lower number again this year, which is a positive for us, at 58, almost $58.5 thousand. And then welfare checks, this is critically important. The higher this number goes, the better off we are. So those 22-ish, 20 to 22 lifeguards, over the course of the season, communicated with almost 14,000 individuals and families, warning them and giving them good information on the beach strand to help us shoot for our targeted goal in 2025, which our goal each year when we start out is a 100% survivability rate on EI beaches. So we want to thank the Fire Department for their hard work over the last 24 months. Police Department, equitably active. Public education activity events, over 122 engagements with the community, and a sub-five-minute response time. So those two key factors are to be applauded, but when you look at the total calls of service, it's 14,000 plus calls for service. Motor vehicle accidents at 125, again, no fatalities, we're extremely thankful for that. 182 total arrests. Business checks, that is not a typographical error. So if you want to take that number and divide it by 365, that's how many times they go around the community, and we did that, it was nearly 400 a day. So 145,974 times, our Police Department individuals have stopped by, gone through, checked, pulled handles, talked to people, or stopped in to an Emerald Isle business in 2024. Golf carts were registered at 1,600 plus. Now we're up to 156 low-speed vehicles. Those LSVs are uniquely different. They are licensed through the state, but we have a small fee that associates with the Emerald Isle program, so they can park in our parking spots. The difference between those LSVs, those will be the golf carts that you see potentially cruising up and down Coast Guard and other streets limited to 35 miles an hour, where a regular standard Emerald Isle-issued golf cart can't traverse, but the LSVs can. Again, that speed limit, Chief, correct, is limited at 35 miles an hour by the great state of North Carolina. Regional parking passes, almost 1,800. Beach driving passes, almost 2,700. And hurricane reentry permits, near 300. Were all issued by the Police Department on their seven-day-a-week schedule, so we want to thank Police Department and their CSRs for that work. Public Works stats. Joe is some sort of a magician. The annual rainfall was almost identical in 2023 as it is in 2024 to less than a couple of tenths of an inch. So it was 63X last year, believe it or not, in '24 it was 63 inches, but it just came in big, heavy spurts, which resulted in PTC number eight. We had another additional Debbie activity. We had all kinds of things happening. So same volume of rain, just the intensity was uniquely different. And trash volume, rate again, 3,300 tons of trash was collected by Simmons and Simmons. Recycling was 669, almost 670 tons, and that's what's coming on our Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday collection. And then by hand, the Emerald Isle Public Works Department picked up 54 tons of trash and 32 and a half tons of recycling off the beach this year. Annual stops for yard debris, these are the numbers that we usually pause. I had it highlighted at first, but our two yard debris trucks made 34,351 individual stops at residential homes this year, picking up 575 loads. Each of those loads is four and a half tons, and so 2,588 tons driving almost 24,000 miles, less than a tenth of a mile at a time. Ouch, stop, go, ouch, stop, go. Those sound effects are free, we will not have to pay for those, nonlicensed. Miles of road that they maintained, 45 and a half. Miles of beach, 12. Vehicle access ramps, five. And they tagged 363 tents, but only had to confiscate five. So while they're out there picking up trash, while they're out there picking up recycling, maintaining the beach, doing inspections, they're also doing all these tasks. Those, thank you to the nine individuals in Public Works that helped make all that occur in 2024. The social media stats, I'm going to skim over because we have dedicated a 15-minute block of time for Mark to talk about how many people we've reached, how we've reached them, but the bottom line to this slide is numbers are up again. The outreach is extremely heavy, and we went a little bit further this year, specifically the Native Plant video, that's a nine-minute educational campaign that really has a lot of great detail in it. We went with a more softer and humorous approach during Thanksgiving with the deep-fried turkey video, and then coming into Fire Department, talking about other things with Christmas lights. So we're really trying to get folks to watch and tune in, and it's working. So there's organic growth in the amount of time viewed, there's organic growth in the number of people viewing. So it's nearly 2 million interactions in 2024 out of that Department of One and the Public Information Sector, so we want to thank Mark for that. Big numbers at the bottom, bolded again, nearly a half a million unique website actions over the course of the year, and we have the granular detail in that that we can share with you, but the bottom line is people are paying attention to Emerald Isle, they're paying attention to the decisions that you're making, the things that we're doing, and they're relatively pleased with where we are moving forward, and you'll see that feedback here, this, today and tomorrow. Planning Department, still we have rated our 6,500 parcels. We have now less than 600 undeveloped lots remaining. Permits issued this year were 758, but the number that was up was a specific attentional m- movement in additional site visits, so there's a pre-occurring and a post-usually, which has allowed Chris to make nearly 754 of those. A majority of those are being made by the Planning Director himself, and then we have a couple of others that are filling in as needed. Project value this year, nearly $170 million in improvements were made, and they flowed through the Planning Department. The Parks and Recs stats, memberships at 550. Visitor numbers are up versus 2023 because we are calculating more of our day pass and summer pass usage, so that number's not necessarily doubled in the number of attendees. We just are more accurately capturing who's coming. So in the past, it was dominantly members, local members, but now we're capturing all those daytime visitors, passes, and people on vacation. So over 36,000 times, people moved and grew through the community center in that 365-day period, even during construction while we were painting and cleaning, fixing bathrooms, and then most recently, our period while we were down cleaning and prepping for the new gym floor. We expect that, those, both of those numbers theoretically to increase in 2025 with all the new improvements. Traffic counts, these are your camera counts that are coming along the island. Dominantly, we look for cars both going on and off the island through the bridge, and that led us to put a camera at Bog Inlet, which gives us some more central and opportunity to see who's going where and what. And the numbers at both the Eastern Ocean Regional Access and Western Ocean Regional Access are all up. So what we were able to determine is the general number of cars coming over the island on the bridge were slightly down versus '22 and '23, but they were all, they were 70,000 higher by July 1. From July 1 to today, we've seen a downtick in tourism visitors. But what you've seen is an uptick of day trippers, and those day trippers are definitely going to the east and the west. So is the national economy constricted in the second half of the year? We saw that reflect EI's visitation, and I believe, and we have a couple of business owners here at the table, we can potentially see that maybe first and second quarter of 2024 were really strong, maybe third quarter kind of flattened off, and then fourth quarter may have seen a downtick depending on the business style and type. And so we've monitored all those pieces, but 4,36,000, almost 4,37,000 cars came and went over the bridge last year. When we say it's down, it's down from 4.145 million, so there is a downtick, but still 4 million cars moved its way over the bridge on 58. The big number is over 73, almost 74,000 people utilized the Western Ocean Regional Access public parking lot, and nearly 57 and some change on the east. That's a lot of people. And if I'm not mistaken, the Parks and Recreation Maintenance Team is still cleaning that unit every 30 to 45 minutes. They're making sure that the toilet paper's stocked, that the paper towels are stocked. We have increased pumping now from the septic systems that are there because of these numbers. We're monitoring all of that, making improvements to those facilities. So as those numbers continue to rise, there may be some additional capture in revenue from parking, which is around $250,000 this year in net revenue. But those net revenues are offset by increased costs for users in that state. So we have leveled the parking fees, which associate back to usage at those two parking lots, but those are numbers that you want to pay attention to as you're planning and looking ahead to 2025. Any questions, suggestions, or deeper dive in any of the numbers that the staff were able to pull together for you here today? Okay. If you'll go to the active projects list, we'll just keep on rolling. Your active projects list should be behind tab number two in your booklets. And these projects are going to be high-dollar projects. We have small things that we're working on, but these are the captured projects. So in active projects behind number two, you will see that there are nine large-scale active projects. In immediate or most recently completed, this team that surrounds you here and their staff members that report to them and their contractors that they've utilized have completed the other 21 projects directly below. So what you have coming forward in immediate projects, you've already approved, identified, and funded replacement of roads that are nearly $200,000, and Public Works is working to add an additional roadway to get us to that dollar amount because the bid came in lower at $178,000. We have two ambulances on order that should be coming here shortly. That's $909,000 in ambulances, plus or minus, that was not funded out of tax dollars. So those ambulances are coming to the community at no cost to EI taxpayers. Two fire engines, which total almost $2 million. Those are also FEMA-funded. Again, we've indicated the redesign and rebuild of Fire Station 2, which is in its design phase, that's $3 million FEMA money. The 13 public beach access walkways, which were $825,000 funded by FEMA, plus the one generous donation, which would give us 14, and the target goal is late April for that. The Lands' End Dune Infiltration Project, I want to slow down and let the staff and the board know where we are with that conversation. We were set to release bids in December. Lands' End has additional questions. We've requested of Lands' End to meet with their board so that we can answer all their questions, and we're currently scheduling that. The project is extremely limited, specifically due to the federal and local state guidelines to construction windows. So the construction window is November 15th to May 1st. We tried to do the bidding in December so that you could award it as early as tomorrow night, but we couldn't get the ball across the Lands' End goal line in time. So now that's going to push the project to fall of 2025, and you can't turn a shovel until after November 15th. So our request is to Mike, the HOA President, to find out when staff can go, meet with the HOA, to answer any question Lands' End has about putting in that dune infiltration project. It's completely designed, the bid documentation from our engineers are ready. We just need to work through the socialization of the conversation and answer all the questions that Lands' End has so that we can use this project to go out for bid. And hopefully, we come in close to or near the bid estimate. But there are some changes that Lands' End may need inside of their system to help move the water that could potentially push that cost above what our grant threshold is. So I want to slow down and say, we were ready to bid, but we couldn't bid it. The next step is to meet with the Lands' End HOA Board. Any questions on that dune infiltration project? Hopefully, we'll have that meeting first quarter, answer any questions that they have. Emerald Isle will be teed up to release that bid summertime. Take your bids in early fall, you'll be able to award it to a contractor and start construction in November. Number seven is the stormwater pumps. So we had a half a million dollars there, and all seven of those pumps are now here. Joe can tell us either now or later. We're very close to having the seventh unit online, correct? We're very close? All righty. So one of those seven pumps had to actually be mobile and placed on a trailer. If not, the flood rules required that pump, that generator, to be potentially 13 feet in the air, which we knew that the community would not be very favorable of a fire watch tower generator right there on Island Circle and coming down Coast Guard. So you'll see it'll be screened in with some vegetation, but it's mobile, we'll have it on a trailer, we'll be able to park it there well advanced of an incident. The other six generators were mounted, tanks are being strapped down, they're propane-based, and then we'll be able to have those serviced on contract. And then if the power of Phase 3 that we've ran to those unit goes out from Carteret Cravenside, then these generators are auto-switched, they should kick right on and keep the water flowing to keep that whole end of Emerald Isle protected during, not the question of if, but the question of when the next major pumping activity storm would occur. So that is a strong redundancy to EI, so we're very thankful that that is now in position and operable. And we're one generator away from being complete. The Parks and Rec Generator is currently scheduled, the concrete pad is poured, the underground conduit is in, but please hear me very clearly, there will be a disruption of service to the gym. The building will be shut down, there will be no power during the installation, which could take at least one, if not two days. So we will have a potentially short-term notice to the community. The building will lose power, but we are at the mercy of the contractor on the install because they will have to cut power to connect the new generator. So that's coming soon, but that's good because in the event that we have a major catastrophe here and we need to feed the residents of Emerald Isle, our emergency center to do so, and now we will have power to keep the building either heated or cooled, the kitchen working, the lights on, and so we will be able to serve Emerald Isle by having that generator in position. And we're a month or two out of that, right?
Actually, they are supposed to be on the ground today.
Today and tomorrow.
So Candace or I may have to step out for a minute, but they are supposed to be here today to start on that.
So hopefully, we'll get that knocked out and we can report on that. So the East Reed, Cedar Street, and Lee Avenue project. Lee Avenue is complete. The East Reed project is pending FEMA approval, and the South Cedar Street project is pending FEMA approval. So 214, 216 Cedar, the idea there is to pump the water, which is flooding and inundating one to two homes, move it into the street and let it percolate under the soil. That project is designed and turned into FEMA, and we've been waiting at least 12 months. The East Reed project was moving water from East Reed, and it had been pumping it westerly down the island, but it was pumping it to the other end of Reed, which would have flooded those folks. So we have a design change that's coming to move that water and turn the water right where blue water's located, and turn that piping and move it up across 58, and ultimately make its way into Archer's Creek per camera rules, and make it enter into a storm grate box. So we're working on getting that project certified, and once we can, we can complete the construction. I don't want to go through your list of 21 amazing things that have happened, but we do want to highlight, Fire Station 1 has a new generator which keeps it up and rolling. And then the gym floor is a really important one. The bridge repairs saved a tremendous amount of money, which ultimately led to the funding of the gym floor. So there's a lot that has happened here that Emerald Isle should be very proud of, and we're going to be talking about equipment needs. Keep in mind, had this not happened, you'd be talking about funding two fire trucks, two ambulances, a dump truck, a 4x4 loader, jet skis, a half a million dollars of emergency radios, and more, which would have been equivalent to a five or six penny tax rate adjustment for all the things that staff were able to work through and get grant funding for. So that is a huge win for EI. The other cap improvement conversations will be coming in a little while, but those are issues, for example, a 1995 dump truck that has far exceeded its service life, and we're trying to figure out a way to move forward to fund it. And so those are all things that we will chat about here over the next few hours. So I'll pause there. Any questions about projects? Any questions about why there's a hole up at Lands' End or Cedar Street? Anything that y'all have that we would like to do a deeper dive on?
One thing.
Yes, sir.
It just came up when we were talking. I was riding down Lee Street, and just a, maybe a request, but on Lee Street where the bridge is, at nighttime when you go through there, I noticed it's pretty dark with a, with a wood comes up. Possibility, maybe put some reflectors on that.
Sure.
On the, that's just all I had.
Absolutely. We'll make that happen by the end of the week.
Thanks.
Yeah, no problem. We're also making sure that there's the vegetation there, and that's soil stabilization, but we're also going in and tree, string trimming it and making sure it stays nice and clean. Thank you, no problem. And we'll do that both directions. Anything else? All righty. So it was a tremendous lift in 2024, a lot of activity. This team really did a great amount of work, and we're thankful for where we're headed. So if you want, we're running ahead of schedule, we'll just introduce and bring Laura up and move right into the financial information. So we're going to go from one exhilarating topic to another. Anybody have a joke, word of the day? We just want to bring sunshine into this space, and so wake everyone up. So we don't want it to be cloudy, we want that sunshine to flow. So come on, we'll bring sunshine, that's Laura.
Money's always sunshine.
My, my, money's always on Laura. Yeah, well, she wants the Pink Floyd money. There we go. Or the Rocky theme song, one or the other. And as Mark loads that, we'll transition. I want to introduce Laura Rochford, our Seasons Finance Director, who keeps us between the median. Well, you're a decade of awesome, so now going on 11 years. Here you go.
Thank you, thank you. I'm going to grab, I'm going to grab the lid to my water just in case, so I don't want to fling, because I will use my hands and fling, fling the water. All right. I'm going to do the numbers as I do. This is a similar slideshow that we've done before. So please interrupt me if something comes up, you know, and ask a question, and I'll take a pause and try to answer it best I can. So, hang on, one moment. So what we're going to go over, I'll do the highlights for the current fiscal year that we're in, talk about where our fund balances are now amongst our funds, talk about our current debt, where we're at as of December on our bank loans, leases, and our subscription-based IT arrangement. Capital Improvement Plan, I have that included, that's in our current budget, our five-year plan, and we just talked about some of the projects, but I want to just bring them up and show you what we have on the plan going forward over the next year to five years. And then talk about the revaluation and the revenue neutral rate, revenue neutral tax rate. So just trying to keep it real high level, but I like this slide because it does show the biggest chunk of our budget. So our budget is made up 40% of property tax, that's 40% of our funding. Next biggest revenue source is sales tax, that's sales tax, that's 22%. And then solid waste fees are actually a very significant portion of our overall budget. So that, those are the biggest sources of revenue coming into the general fund. And then we have our other service fees, our user fees, and then some state-collected taxes that are coming in. But property tax is number one, 40%. On the expenditure side, our largest departments, Fire Rescue is our largest department at number one, 25% there. We have our Police Department as our next-largest department. And then solid waste, again, is the number three largest department. And then you see our other departments there in that pie chart, but just showing you the bulk of our budget. And I'm flipping, I don't think I need my papers, hang on, here we go. Again, here's our team. We have 73 full-time, as we mentioned, and roughly about 123, that fluctuates, of course, in the summertime, so that'll change with our seasonal folks. Our adjusted fund balance, where we landed in June, was just under 5 million, 4.9 million. That's a really good number, we like to see that gradual increase every year. That equates to 36% of our 20, our current general fund budget as amended, and that's really good. We want a minimum, no, no less than 25%, we want to see that get closer to the 50% mark. So that's really good. So we want to see that going up every year, just very gradually. Our amended budget currently is 13.57 million dollars, so that's where we're at right now in our current budget. And here's where our cash or our fund balances are right now. So for example, the next largest fund that we have is our future beach nourishment. We're at just under 8.3 million cash on hand or fund balance. That's going to grow a little bit over the next six months. We're going to get to probably about 8.6 million with interest earnings and the remainder of the tax collections. If we don't do any beach projects with town funds, and we do the same funding next year, end of our fiscal 2026 will probably be right around 9.5 million if interest rates keep going too, because as we're building, even though rates are coming down, we're still earning. So the other fund there you see is our special events fund, and that is right now really just the marathon and the car show. The other special events have either, you know, changed, or, you know, we don't have them included in that one anymore. We have $14,000 in the fund right now, we have a little bit left over from both marathon and car show, and then right now, we're getting marathon prepayments, they're already coming in for next year. So we just see those deposits coming in, we hold that for the next event. So I just have 15,000 on hand. Usually, we don't have a lot of fund balance in a special events fund because we suspend down the event and then we move on. Our capital project funds, those are our three capital project funds that we're tracking and collecting reserves for right now. Bike and Ped Fund right now is just under 73,000 as of today. We're going to have the Bike the Banks event and the fundraising, so we'll probably get it up to 78,000. And then if we don't do any spending on any capital projects or any maintenance, if we just keep adding to it and we include our marathon contribution, you'll probably see that get up to 98,000, again, if you don't spend it by June of 2026, so the next, the budget year we're going into. Similarly, the golf cart improvement fund, today we're at 59,000, and we add 25,000 each year from our general fund. And so assuming we don't have any construction projects unless, you know, we make those changes through our budgeting currently this year, we would, we could see that grow up to 84,000 for some future construction opportunities. And then last but not least, on the capital list here, the non-grant funds, we have our Dog Park Fund, and that's in reserve right now. We have donations there, and then the Towns contribution, right under $32,000. And I have a projected figure in the hopes that we'll select a site and construct that by 2026. If that, if we don't do that by 2026, we'll just hold that for a future decision. So, and I'll pause right there for just a second in case we have any questions. I think I'm going to jump to... I think I'm gonna jump to, operator, thank you. So I'm gonna switch. If there's no questions on fund balance, I'll go right into debt. This slide is just our, what I refer to as bank debt. These are installment purchase agreements. And it is where we're at as of December 2024. They are in order of the oldest to the newest. And in the description there, you can see the maturity date of when we're going to pay those debts. So we have 1.4 million debt to the banks on our projects there, which equates to about 291,000, 292,000 of annual debt service on these payments. And the Braun ambulance will be paid off next month. So that's wonderful news, so that, that debt is complete and we'll have that paid off. And also our Stryker heart monitors have already been paid off. That was a five-year note. And we have that in our plan to replace those probably every five years due to technology. And we'll talk through that as we go through the budget process. And then our newest debt is our new Mack truck, that's a five-year note. So bottom line, on the bottom of this, just important to know, it's very low debt ratio. So in relation to our tax base, you know, we're doing fantastic. It's a very low debt there. And then also 2.25% of our total budget, so very low numbers there. So that's, that's good, we're not heavy in debt there. Other forms of debt are lease, and this is a separate slide because we've changed our accounting rules, we've reclassified that. We used to consider this to be an operating expense. Now, accounting standards, we categorize it as debt because it is contractual. So we have our other, other sources of debt here. We have our Enterprise fleet arrangement, we have 31 passenger vehicles with Enterprise and that equates to about 234,000 a year in payments. We have one brush truck on lease. That is going to expire February 2026, I believe. That's about a 49, $50,000 payment annually. We have our pellet tear debris site that we're leasing. And then we also have our IT contract with VC3. That's your computers, servers, internet connection and voice services. And so that's all listed there, that equates to about 423,000 annually. And again, that's about 3% of our total budget. So not too concerning when you add those two numbers together, that's right around 5% to 6%. So that, that's a good figure, I think. I think we're doing okay in the debt realm.
Laura, do we compare that to the overall budget or to the general fund, the debt service ratio?
That's, that's just the general fund only. Yep, I don't have any other of the, none of the other funds are included in that figure. Yep, just general fund.
What's a good and comfortable margin to stay within?
I think we, I don't think we want to go over 8%.
8% is general.
I think that's my number in my mind.
That's our safety net.
Eight, or, and there's, there is a rule and I don't know it by heart, but I think eight's the good number. And, and I think it can go a little higher, I'll look at my notes and, but there is a statuteary limit for us. Budget, we have to always adopt, or we always have to incorporate our debt too. That's another important requirement from the state. So that's like number, we can't just not budget for it, so, unless we can get out of a contract. Any other questions?
Just a quick question. Back to that Dog Park Fund money, is there a time requirement as far as finance goes? As long as you're holding that money, or are we good?
On the Dog Park?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're not, is that messing up your finances any with keeping it? Like, we have made a decision where it's going away, what's happening or?
We didn't, so to my knowledge, there was not a commitment of time from the donors' perspective, from the, from the town's perspective, that was a board decision to budget there so that, you know, that's this board, so the board could change that decision. But from the donors' decision, as far as I know, if anybody can remember, I don't think we committed to a deadline. We have actually had one donor request a reimbursement and we gladly gave that back. So I think the commitment is still to place it, it's just taken us a little bit longer. But if, for some reason, if a donor, you know, decided it was taking too long and they wanted a refund, we would gladly give their money back on a donation.
Alright, thanks.
Yep. This is our capital improvement plan. So along with the budget that we're going to adopt, we also adopt our five-year plan. This is rough draft, so it's subject to change. This is a little bit of the one that's currently in our adopted 2025 budget and then we've tweaked it a little bit. And today, you know, we may make decisions and throughout the budget process to update it. Matt had gone through some of those FEMA projects. This is organized 2026, the, the most short-term projects that we're looking at and then also by dollar, the largest project. So Fire Station 2 is number one biggest project on our list as far as dollars are concerned. And then you can also see on the right-hand side, our expected funding source. So the majority of those projects on the top are all of our FEMA grants. And you can see them in order. I won't go through all of the details because we've just talked about a little bit just a few minutes ago and then we're going to talk about them tomorrow. But we do have our knuckle, midway in there, we have our Knuckle Boom brush truck that's going to expire in the February timeframe, so we want to make sure we have that on the list. We also have our beach access walkway replacement. That's something that we've traditionally had year over year as a, trying to do three at a time. And so we wanted to keep that on the list and then we can decide as an organization if we need to do three or two or one this year, you know, that, we can adjust that, but that's a placeholder. Our annual Powellville street resurfacing is always considered, it's always on our list and so we're going to keep it there. And hopefully we'll get those revenues coming in around 200,000 a year. The heart monitors I just mentioned, I believe we're going to have four up for financing. The nice thing with the manufacturers, they were giving us a 0% interest on those heart monitors. So hopefully we'll get that again this year. I don't, I don't know what the quote is, but, you know, fingers crossed. We have a backhoe, backhoe and Lord, I'll just say backhoe. Public Works needs some equipment. The dump truck that he, I know he's got a presentation and then the bucket truck. So that's part of 2026. And continuing on another FEMA project that we're going to talk about, we have a school activity bus that we talked about last year, we don't want to forget that. I know there's a lot of maintenance, so we have that on the list. The annual golf cart infrastructure, we commit $25,000 each year from the general fund to, to make golf cart improvements. And then I lumped up our ride, you know, we keep our vehicles and our riding mowers and stuff, they're, they're expensive, so we keep that on the list. And so there's three potentially that we might need. And that may, that may change as we go through the budget process. But roughly we would be looking at about 8 million in investment between grant funds, donations and the general fund and financing. So that's our list so far and we'll, we're glad to update it.
A question. One of our former commissioners, Jim Normile, in relation to Powellville funding for the streets, he, I know he had at least done some research and asked some questions. That money is based on residents? What is it?
Per capita.
Yeah, like per capita and then, you know, not, and it didn't really take into consideration the, what, 40,000 people, people a week?
So would you, it's a per capita conversation blended with miles of roads, but it's based on the per capita of permanent full-time residents according to the county census. So Emerald Isle right has 4,000 people listed, but we see 40,000 to 50,000. It's up and down the beach coast as well as in the mountains. But there is a definitive locked amount of funding that comes through. So there was a conversation that was elevated to league municipalities of whether or not we could get an adjustment. I can sit here and comfortably say to you that if Emerald Isle were to get more money, someone would get less money and that someone would be Charlotte, Greensboro, Raleigh. It's not a high probability you would win the conversation.
Okay.
Although it makes sense to us and probably makes sense to Boone, Black Mountain and Asheville, it doesn't make sense to the Urban Crescent or the equality across the state from all 100 counties.
Yeah, I just remember the conversation and I'm guilty of not following up to find out how it ended, but yeah, just curious.
So, so we, that's the, the short-term projects. This is our, the next list is more of the long-term projects. Maybe these will be adjusted again. They might be pushed down the road a little bit due to funding issues or needs and they may be pushed forward, of course, due to needs and funding. But this is in order, this is basically from our 2025 capital improvement plan that we have in place. And in talking to the team, I already know of a change and one that I don't have on the list. So we're going to get 20, 2030 on the list, which is amazing. But we had a project queued up, a really significant stormwater project that would be grant funded through FEMA. It's been delayed due to review and funding through FEMA. I sometimes must believe that they're focused on other issues and this probably got pushed down in priority. But that's the Western Emerald Isle stormwater infiltration project. So that's a big dollar and so it's just in order again of dollar value. And then in this sheet, you have the years. So we've kind of got it, we keep pushing it, but we're hoping for '27 we'll see some action there. The boat for a fire department actually has a new engine in it and I was told that it probably doesn't need to be replaced in '27, so that's good. We want to keep our eyes on these pieces of equipment, keep it in our list, but we'll probably get to push that out into a later year. So that'll go down the list, but not forgotten. An excavator, I hope I spelled that right. We have a dump truck, a second dump truck for Public Works and '27. And then we have our ATVs, utility vehicles. Probably the biggest by far, most significant conversation we'll continue to have year over year is our Fire Station 1 replacement. And I have it listed here as emergency services facility in the event that it is a multi-use EOC building. We estimated it around 10 million. We, we've discovered land is probably going to be the hurdle on this, but that's going to be there and that's a good placeholder and not to be forgotten. We'll make sure that we plan for it appropriately. So assuming all those projects are still in place, maybe reordered in the listing, that would be another 12, 13 million in investment over the next two, three, four, or five years. So that's something that we'll be working together to get our plan in place for the upcoming budget adoption. Alright, I'm gonna jump right into the taxes. So normally I usually start the slide out in the beginning of the budget presentation and so, but things are changing, so this is exciting time, 2026. So we have our current tax value. This is what we closed the books with in June, that's reported in our financial statements of 3.2 billion dollars. And very important when we go into budgeting, we always kind of keep this in mind as we're planning and discussing particularly with those big capital improvements. A penny in your tax rate generates about $323,000 currently. And when we're trying to determine what our tax rate should be, we don't necessarily have to adopt a penny. We can do a quarter penny, we can do 50 cent, you know, there's, there's choices there. But that's what we've always had for the past four years now. And we continue to be one of the lowest general fund tax rates amongst the North Carolina beach towns. That'll fluctuate as the other beach towns do their reveals. If we're not all lined up, it'll, we'll go up and down. But interestingly enough, Emerald Isle is actually not only lowest amongst beach towns, we're also one of the lowest in the state. So that's fun facts and we can pull those up as we, we go through the budget. This year, we're in a revaluation year. I don't know what the county has going to give us for our tax value. I have no idea, that's my Laura Rochford guesstimate. But keeping in mind, we're seeing some facts and figures from other counties. We've heard 100% increase in Johnston County. We've heard, I've heard 50 to 70% in some of the other counties just in conferences. And just what we're seeing in the documents and what you'll see here that's been published by the county, I wouldn't be surprised if we have 100% increase. So that's good to keep in mind. We might be looking at a penny generating 600,000 just for our planning purposes only. But, you know, not that we're going to adopt that, we just need to know that when we're going in. So what will the new tax rates be? We don't know, but here we go. So part of the process is in our revaluation year is we are required as an organization, the county will do this and so will we. We, we will calculate a revenue neutral tax rate and we're, we're required to disclose that by statute. It doesn't necessarily mean that we have to adopt it, but we want to give that to our residents and so that they can compare it and be information when we're going into our adoption process. That rate is what we would produce if our tax, it's the rate that would bring us the tax revenues that we currently have in the current fiscal year. And that rate is adjusted, the statute allows us to adjust it for growth. So since our last revaluation, I believe we've had probably quite a bit of new construction. I think the Islander Drive area probably grew up since that revale, so we can account for growth in our value, or revenue neutral rate. So this is just a quick calculation, just a sample. What if, what, what it might look like, it won't be these numbers. This is just a scenario, I said, you know, okay, what would that be? So for 2024, for example, we have our 3.2 billion dollars in property value. The town's current tax rate is 16 and a half cents, so that gives us a tax levy about 5.3 million dollars. That's our 40% of our total budget. In 2026, I know some people are worried that, you know, oh, my tax bill's going to go up. Not necessarily, your value might go up, but the town could lower the tax rate to say around eight, eight cents. Not sure what it's going to be until we get the numbers from the county. And that would give us that 5.3 million dollars. And then if we calculate our growth in, and I just plopped a number out of the sky, I have no idea what the real number is, but that seemed reasonable. We would potentially, you know, let our community know that our revenue neutral rate's about 8.6 cents. So just facts and figures, but I wanted to kind of go through that. That's how that'll look when we, when we do those calculations. And then we'll, we'll recommend a tax rate for adoption.
Hey Laura, what's the timeline? I know you probably, they haven't published a date certain, but when do you expect to know what the effect of those revaluations are?
Um, we, we're trying, they've been a little bit tight on that release of information. I talked to the consultant there and she said maybe February for sure, March. So, you know, for sure, March, I'm, I'm going to probably ask her and say, hey, give me a directional figure. And Matt, I know Matt with the county manager and stuff too, so I don't know.
So to help Commissioner Wooton to enhance that question, so if you've been watching the news, Carteret County is currently without their county manager whose last day is the first week in February. Their assistant county manager left in October. Their tax administrator left. Their IT director left. And I believe their projects manager, space is vacant as well. So the team that they do have is working as quickly as they can to get that data out. And what they indicated to me two weeks ago was we shouldn't look for it before March. But having to read those tea leaves, it may be after March.
I think the other factor in all this, and we talked about it last year, was the potential increase in insurance rates. And if the values go up and the replacement cost goes up, then taxpayers' insurance bills likely to go up as well. So I love the idea of keeping the, our tax rate as low as we can so that it's not a double burden on the folks that pay taxes. And that's probably incumbent on us to keep our spending as under control as we can to make sure they don't get a double spike this year or the first year that all this kicks in.
Alright, I have just a few more slides on the revenue neutral rate and I've got some slides from the county that they shared. And so I thought it was very interesting, so I wanted to just share you, share that with you, a few excerpts from their valuation report that they did in October. So I, I wanted to throw this comment in here just to let people know that that is an average rate when you're talking to folks. If we did have 100% increase, everybody's bill might be a little bit different. So one house might be increased at 100%, another might be up 125% or bigger. And then some folks might have not quite, you know, maybe they have a 75% increase. So some bills are going to go up, some bills will probably stay pretty close if we go with that rate. And some bills will actually go lower, but it's, so that's an average. So when we're talking to the individuals, everybody's going to be a little bit different, but it should be kind of averaged. Let me see, I think that's my last slide. I'm going to switch slides. Mark, if he'll help me. I was given a Schedule of Values presentation from the Carteret County. They shared that this was done in October and it's a lengthy one, so I promise I won't go through all of it, but I wanted to just show you a few. So when, when Mark, is there another one?
And while Laura- And while Laura's loading that, I put on our, our list here so you can all reference it at a later date. Fingers crossed, revale could be as early as February, but the realistic is March or potentially a little after. And then what we can do is assemble our budget. And then you establish your tax rate just based on your need, and that number will come down. And historically, Emerald Isle always has striven to have the lowest tax rate possible with the highest deliverables of excellence in each of our departments. So that's the mantra that this team's worked under for at least a decade plus.
There we go. So I just put that up there using the slides from the county. This is from the Vincent Valuation Firm. I didn't see the original one, but I wanted to share some of their information. I thought it was valuable. So when we're talking to folks, if there are questions on, or we can share this information too, the full slideshow will be available. It's very large, but we can access it. So I can share this. The reappraisal is based on current market value. I think that's important, that it's a market valuation. And it includes all real estate. So land, improvements, residential, commercial, agricultural, industrial, if we have it. So that's important. That all goes in there. State law does require that we do a reappraisal at least every eight years. Generally, we try to have it every four years. I think, I think we're in our fifth year due to some software changes and so forth. But every eight years. And it's intended to distribute the tax burden equitably when we get these revaluations. Market value, they just talk about the market value just a little bit, you know, letting folks know that it's the price that the property would bring in the open competitive market. And so I think they wanted to make sure that people knew that the tax department doesn't create the market value. It is really based on real estate sales and information in the market, in the open market. This is why I wanted to share, I said, when we've been talking like, you know, oh, my gosh, we know what's happening in our own neighborhoods. I know I do at my house. I've been, you know, saying, oh, what are they asking? You know, so we know what's going on. So they have a countywide illustration. I don't have a lot of Emerald Isle, but I did want to show you a few of the slides. So these are the values that we're seeing. This particular home in Beaufort is an increase of 576%. White Oak, we have 106% increase since the last revale. Atlantic Beach, we're right in that 100% increase in valuation. So I just kind of wanted to show everybody these examples so that we know what we're looking at. Emerald Isle, there's a home in Emerald Isle, a pretty typical example, 105. Moorhead City, you'll see some bigger numbers there. This is 184% valuation. This is an example, Kate Carteret. Not every house will be those big numbers. You know, some of them are increasing. That's still a huge increase, but not those over 100 figures that we're seeing. So there's a Kate Carteret example there. High Knoll Shores condos holding their value, very significant there. Indian Beach, similarly, still a big increase, but not that giant number that we were just looking at. Commercial, I saw this one. I said, oh, Captain's Table. And so even the commercial properties, even it's an old building, the values are really strong. So there you see that increase in value. Atlantic Beach, again, another commercial, 1964. And so that's the examples. And that's why we're talking, you know, we just have been trying to really, where we're going to land. So that's, that's what we have coming. We'll share the information once we get it. And just the next steps, this again is from the county. These, the appraisal will be as of January 1. And then we should watch our mailboxes sometime in early March when we get our notices, you know, what the, what they have our value at. We can appeal if there's an issue there. If, you know, there's a mistake or something, there's an appeals process. And we should also include the appeals process in the town's valuation as well when we're getting those numbers. But we'll make sure we have good numbers in the March, April, May timeframe to present to the board. And I'm happy to answer any questions or send you to the county.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Laura, how much of a, does the occupancy tax contribute to the general fund?
We don't, it doesn't, we don't have a process.
Oh, I, so it doesn't contribute to anything because it's on a beach nourishment? And what percent of the, of the revenue source is that? How much revenue is going?
So we track the occupancy tax for, I do have that in our financial statements, actually. We were watching that because it is a nice economic indicator for us. So you can, you know, if it's growing, we're, the economy is good, people are spending money. When we're watching, you know, if it starts dipping down, that might be an indication of contraction. But we don't, yeah, just beach, future beach nourishment. Go ahead.
So roughly $10 million a year is generated by the property tax, or the occupancy tax. 50% of that, which is $5 million, goes to the Shoreline Protection Office. 50% of that goes to the Carteret County Tourism Development Authority, of which zero comes to our individual coffers. If you would indicate, what we received this past year from TDA for any special events would be the only backflow of those dollars into our, into our budget. We had received it for the marathon in the past, St. Patrick's Day Festival, Emerald Isle Fishing Tournament. So the TDA, 50% of that goes to them. And then through the TDA, they can grant dollars back to individual communities or nonprofit organizations that apply for those funds. The other question that you may be asking, and if I'm overstepping, I apologize, but out of that 10 million, it's critical to know that any, anywhere between 60 and 65% of those dollars are generated in our zip code. That's, that's a key, key metric. So we're the lion's share of the tourism industry coming out of EI. And then there's some debate over that as to whether that's because the facilities management companies are anchored here, but it's, it's directly a derivative of what's being captured.
And we only get a trickle of that back through events, special events that the TDA allocates?
That's correct. Any, any town within Carteret gets the, through the grant projects. And I think that if I'm not mistaken, somebody in the room may know better, but they had a $300,000 to $400,000 reallocation of those funds on the TDA side annually, and that's set by their board. So their board determines what dollar amounts get poured back into which bucket, what the limitations are, how frequent. And I think Commissioner Taylor can speak to that because as a applicant and recipient of the fishing tournament, there was a project that said it was a seed money startup. Fishing tournament got $20,000. The next year, you get 75, then 50, then the final year, you get 25. And that's designed to ramp up a plane of event so that it can take off and then sustain itself, which EI Fishing Tournament is doing now. So is that, is there anything you'd like to add to how your, your function receive those dollars and how it helped you?
That's, that's exactly correct. And the way, that's the way it works. And the, the hard part about it is that you've got to be real careful is that the, if the, the event doesn't happen, say like one year we got washed out, day of, it got washed out, we had to repay back all that money. And we spent it, it's all required to spend on advertisement too. So you have to be very careful that you have in your budget to pay that money back. And they'll, they'll claim it, they'll want it back at that time. So that's the scary part about that whole, whole part of it is, but it, but it's a great program if it works like that. But, but Emerald Isle, I agree, Emerald Isle does put in a lot of money into it. And we don't really have that way to claim that money back that much. It seems like we can't grab it, like we should be able to somehow.
That, that would take legislation to get that, that formula changed, coming from TDA 50%. Has anyone talked to a legislator about the possibility of changing that?
There was a conversation on the floor about nourishment dollars and whether those nourishment dollars should be restricted to the Atlantic Ocean side of the Outer Banks, Boebanks Island only, or could it be for shoreline stabilization on the ICW side? So in the sound. That conversation was breached by a major business owner in EI, and it didn't get any traction. So the conversation on the TDA side would be really hard to shift the model of 50/50. I think the easier conversation would be, what does TDA do with their 50%? And maybe the best way to manage that would be through the people that reside in EI, that represent EI on that board at the TDA level. So that may be a good starting point. We've tried that. Mayor Barber was critically involved in the TDA board in the past. We had worked hard to get Commissioner Vogel onto that space because she's in the rental property business. And those big chairs tend to bounce back between Emerald Isle Realty, Blue Water, and those folks. Right now, is Kyle?
Kyle.
Yeah. She's, I think the chairperson. She's the current chairperson. I don't know when it sunsets though. So I don't know if they're on a calendar or fiscal year, so I apologize. But we do have a local representative chairing that, and she's been very helpful to us. So I'm not sure when her, I'll, I'll, one of us will contact her to find out when she sunsets.
Yeah, I keep her last name.
I'm going to fail the trivia question, and I do apologize.
Judy Stott, Stotters, chairing the.
Yeah, Kyle from Spinnakers, but she's the chairperson, and she's tremendous.
She got, she got married, and I don't know her last name.
It was Kyle Barre.
But she's been very helpful to us and participatory. When we do our regional meeting in this space and/or the Islander, we, we outgrew here. We had to go to the Islander. So we're looking to do our community conversation with the rental partners and property managers again in February. That room is usually full, and she helps us facilitate during that period. But that's Lagos?
Yes.
Kyle Lagos.
There you go.
Thank you.
My caffeine's kicking in, Commissioner. I do apologize to Kyle because she is a tremendous asset and resource to us and a great friend. So she has helped us. But maybe that would be your first point of contact.
Yeah, I was speaking to Senator Sandersen, and he said it's been a long time since that formula's been looked at to be evaluated. And I was suggesting maybe if we could get more funds and put it back toward, since half of it goes to beach nourishment, maybe we could use it for anything likewise tourist related, like beach accessways. So we don't have to use it ourselves, take it out of our own fund for that. Because that is a, that's a.
We've, we've tried that. We, we actually had, if you remember, Jim Browder was here explaining why they won't let that happen. But again, any good question starts with the premise or hypothesis. So I wouldn't say that it's a, a nonstarter or 0%. I'm just going to share with you that we have looked at it. But I think that having evaluated that, the conversation of how to get those dollars back into the local communities is through the TDA side. But there are limitations to what the TDA and the beach nourishment, the Shoreline Protection Office can do with those funds. And you are correct that any changes to that legislation would have to come out of Raleigh.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm talking about. We just go to the legislators. Anyway, just thinking of ways to, for creating revenue that's, you know, unique to Emerald Isle. And one of them certainly is our occupancy tax, because like you said, we contribute the lion's share of that.
For the record, if I'm Matt or Candace, Mark, you may know as well, when you do receive these grants from TDA for special events within a community, whether it be a startup or a legacy or whatever else, you're still required to spend that money for advertising.
Yes.
So in essence, all the TDA's money that's awarded back to municipalities or to any nonprofits for private or special events is, it's still spent on advertising outside the area.
Yeah, they're, they're very strict on that, too.
Yes, very strict.
I'm not quite sure. I think it's 50 miles or something like that. It has to, it has to reach out a certain point.
That's right.
And, and they monitor that, too. And you have to put in a report at the end that you did it. And they're going to claim that money back if you didn't use it for the right source. It's a great program, but it's very, very strict on how it works.
Lots of strings attached. We just need to, some different strings coming from different directions on it. Thanks.
All right. Any other follow-up questions for Laura and/or Matt as far as revales, budget, or that, that part of the conversation?
Well, on, on the budget part of it, the administration, have we looked at ways that actually trim costs in each department? What ways have we looked at, at cutting costs?
I don't have a list for you today. We, I think we've done this previously, but I think I can say in a, in a fuzzy answer, we're constantly looking for savings, even in the smallest bills, utility bills, whatever. Bigger, the bigger dollars, you know, the bigger savings. We, we did trim our full-time headcount in the current 2025 budget. So we were at 75, now we're at 73. So it's, I'm going to give you, I guess, a fuzzy answer. That was my immediate response. But we can certainly look at some hard, you know, examples and provide, provide that. And I know Matt has some ideas because, but, but that was my immediate response, you know, my, my instinct.
So we have everyone here in the space.
Yeah, we can talk about that.
So if the mayor will allow, we can take a few minutes and you can grab the microphone. I'll start rattling some. If you think of a specific way that you saved money within your department, throw your hand up and we'll pass the baton of microphone to you and we'll go around. So some of those solutions and changes, Emerald Isle processed its own tax bills and mailed them out, hand stuffed them, and had all the manual labor and all the costs and the association with that. We streamlined that by going with Carteret County on a duplicate billing system, which saved us a tremendous amount of labor, but also helped us reduce by one FTE, which was about a $60,000 year annual savings. Some of the other things that we've done, which has included the cost recovery that this team established last year, all those changes that you made, which was a fee for service connected back to the actual service. In the budget, you'll see that the lease vehicles are representative of a $234,000 annualized cost, which you'll see in the next presentation, and then what you'll see in the PD presentation tomorrow. The cost to replace one vehicle rate now is fluctuating around $60,000, a little bit less. So if you were to replace and divide 60,000 in a 234, you could only get four vehicles. We have 31. So what we've done is by replacing those vehicles on the lease, you've taken the maintenance line item, which was fluctuating annually between 85,000 and 100,000, you drop that automatically down to 20,000 or less. So instead of doing an $8,900 engine replacement, which is what we have with the PD vehicle today, that you'll see tomorrow, we were able to have a vehicle that was on lease, reserve those cash dollars back, which if you go back to that initial slide, I think was 30 some thousand this year. So each and every one of those things, in addition to improvement of the efficiencies of the vehicles, the maintenance and time being down. I know fire is set and ready to go, so I'll stop. And I want to, I'll tell you in public today, Chief Mathias is probably one of the most creative and cost-cutting leaders I've seen in a long time. And that's not to be, to discredit, everybody in this room is. Everybody here can hit a golf ball, but if you're working with Tiger Woods, it makes it a little bit harder, right? So, or everybody can shoot a basketball, but when you're playing with Michael Jordan. So these folks that we're surrounded by today, I think are one of the best team members I've ever seen. And then if Joe doesn't mind, I think he, he has some savings, but I can tell you that Chad's found some in public work. So when this team sat up in a meeting like this and said, if you'll give us the opportunity to have somebody help us do the redrive project, I guarantee that we can finish the walkways in EI Woods. And Chad, I want you guys, if that's okay, whichever one of you want to say how many dollars you saved, because it was budgeted at 150, and I think you remember where you came in at, we share that. So each of these swings are tens of thousands of dollars. They're not tens and twenties. So Mathias, chief, if you want to go next.
Yes. The RMS system that we talked about earlier today, we've worked with other municipal fire chiefs in Carteret County to switch that RMS system. They are coming on board as well. What that has done for us is provided a discount. This year's RMS was the same price as our previous year's RMS. However, as we go forward, that is a one-time startup fee for training, getting all our personnel on board, seeing all the features of it. As we go forward, that's going to be a $4,000 to $5,000 less. We're still working to get more departments within the county on that, including Carteret County. If we can get them on board, we will see a significant drop in that price for our RMS system. And that provides us with our EPCR, our fire incident reporting, all of our public education that we do throughout the year, especially in October. Our ocean rescue, the list goes on and on, also provides us with some great data that we'll see tomorrow as far as our heat mapping. So we can track where our calls are coming from. We can actually dial into those metrics and say, hey, this end or these people or this neighborhood, we're seeing an increase in call volume, whether it be fire EMS or ocean rescue. Additionally, Chief Coffey here has worked with the EMS providers, EMS departments amongst the county, to go in for our striker maintenance, which is our stretchers, our life bags, our Lucas devices, which are CPR devices. What am I leaving out? Stair chairs, our power loads, which help reduce back injuries. It picks the stretcher up and slides them into the truck. Worked with those other EMS departments for that maintenance contract to provide a discount as well. So the more we go into it, the more departments go into it, the better price reduction we can get due to them only coming here a certain time of the year. Those are just some of the two top ones. Working with the municipal chiefs over the past year has been a great thing. And we're working to do more together to bring. working to do more together to bring reduced costs to us and savings to our areas and municipalities as a whole.
The big one that he's failing to tell you about is that the fire station two rebuild was fixed ahead to close to $6 million. Chief pulled us in, deputy chief, we all went over, we inspected what was happening in Piney Green. We sourced a better contract opportunity and we believe that instead of 5.7 to 5.9 million dollars, that project's going to come in at close to $3 million. So that was a $3 million savings. So we let them take Sunday off. Additionally to that, in the public beach access walkways, we came in at approximately $1.4 million when we went out to bid for 10 walkways. Doing the project internally, rebidding costs, materials, and I want to thank everyone from Public Works where Joe, Chad and I went out, Candace helped, the spreadsheet was made by Jen, we were able to put our materials list together, save $300,000 in material. We drove our labor costs down from almost 700,000 to 325,000 for a delta of a half a million dollar savings. And ultimately, that half a million dollar savings that we did in that process allowed us to go from 10 walkways to 13 walkways. So it drove the aggregate cost of walkways from $82,500 down to sub $55,000 per unit. And we increased the style and type of material, which would give us a 15 to 20-year lifecycle with a, a trek-style deck walkway, SureStep material, all stainless steel hardware, all stainless steel bolts. And then the walkway appearance looks even better because we went from a three, four and five-foot wide walkway to the maximum six-foot wide walkway. So we not only increased the number of walkways that were being funded, we extended the dollars, saved a half a million and made a bigger footprint. So it helped the community. Now they have what we would consider an in and an out. You can pass somebody on a six-foot wide walkway where it's a little bit hard to pass them on a three or a four. Those are some, any other departments? And you guys can talk about the bridges and how you save that near 100 grand in the bridges.
On the lease vehicles, have we looked at the, at the end of the lease, at the option to buy?
That's tremendous and thank you for that. I failed to mention it. We have looked at the option to buy and we have pulled the trigger on multiple vehicles. We were able to buy a Dodge Charger at sub $5,000. I think we gave 40-some-hundred dollars for a Charger we put into Fleet and I think Mike or Chad can address that one. Chad 2.0 or Chad PD as opposed to Chad Public Works. We did do that where we have a situation where we had a Charger that lost an engine and we had warranty put the engine in. So we could have sold that car and netted back $5,000 or $6,000, but instead purchased that unit and bought a $15,000 or $18,000 car for 45 or 4800. So we have done that. That's played out really well. We were looking at that option on pickup trucks. We looked at that option dominantly in the PD. So yes, sir, that has played out extremely well. Thanks for the bump and reminder, Chad.
Roughly a year ago, we saved right around 90 grand on the Emerald Isle Woods walkways. And more recently, we saved roughly 10 grand on the Bog Sound Court Swale installation. Yes, while in-house labor.
The police department has also utilized grant funding from the Governor's Highway Safety Program where last year we purchased through points by participating in the program. We were able to get 10 thermal printers and this year we're looking to upgrade, Chad is it, four radar units.
It would be good to know and I, I love the chart and I guess we'll get to it tomorrow with the police department, the pull-out chart that shows all the vehicles that we're leasing and the example of the 31 leased vehicles and saving. What if it was 28 vehicles regardless of how you pay for them? So I think one of the things we need to do is figure out, is there any reduction in the number of vehicles that could be made? And it has to be considered by department. And then brief out what would the mission impact be? Because you don't want to go cutting vehicles that are necessary to complete the mission. But I think about like the two-door Jeep that's over there that I know you use, Chris. Is that necessary? Maybe it's paid for?
It's, yeah, that's one of the least expensive leased vehicles at less than $454 a month with a yield return of a possible gain back of 20,000, which it'll make it revenue positive. But that's what Chris drove to the 754 inspection. So I would say to you, yes, sir, I think it's one, the best, one of the best investments we've made financially and two, it's absolutely mission critical. So what I would do is when you guys expand on your other savings, because I know Parks and Rec has a, a bevy of them as well, then we'll go around and if each department feels that you have the ability to reduce any vehicles, we'll ask you to speak about it here today. And we, well, once Candace goes, we'll start with Joe and we'll go around the table.
Oh, I was thinking about, you know, this isn't the last budget conversation we're going to have. So maybe in future meetings carve out a 10 or 15 minutes so you can really think about it and have some thoughtful presentations about why you need as many vehicles as you need. And maybe we can put it in the context of all the other municipalities around here because it looks like we have a lot more vehicles than our neighboring municipalities. If that's the right answer, it's the right answer, but it, it's a significant difference. So I think it would be very helpful as we go through the budget process to understand, is there anywhere we could save there?
To some of the cost savings within the Parks Department is our maintenance team, we had someone retire and we went from a team of seven to a team of six. So the team has taken on a heavier load to replace that person, but that was a cost savings of about $60,000. And then more recently, in the last few months, we had someone else retire and it took about three months for me to find the right candidate, but that was three months of not paying that person's salary, so also a cost savings. The gymnasium floor, most recently, we saved about $20,000 by having my team and Public Works actually remove, rip up and install the new floor. So that was significant there. And those are just two of the top ones. I'm sure there's more.
The one other one that we've saved in the IT side is Greg Hayes is probably close to six figures now in cost savings that he's provided us. This, not necessarily with this board, but the previous board had tasked us with doing what was considered a public-facing capital projects list and inventory. Greg did that in-house and that, the lowest estimate we had to produce that was $30,000. So he, he gave us a direct savings of 30,000 there, which covered 50% of his annualized salary. And then in addition, if Chris wants to speak to it, I mean, Chris has done more work with Greg in the last 12 months and I, I can't even begin to think about all the changes in IWork, all the software updating, the public-facing community desk that you've done, all the change-ups that you, Greg and Tony have accomplished. So if you'll hit that.
Yeah, we really ramped up the public relations part of it. We've opened up our permitting system to anybody 24/7/365. You can go on the town's website, access, uh, by address, by permit number, who's got a permit, who doesn't? And it has the entire documentation involved on that. That's intended to help the public gauge what's been permitted, what's not, what was used to issue that permit. We've also incorporated a QR code on each of the permits that we print. So anybody that is savvy enough, they can pick up their smartphone and scan it, takes you to that same website with information specific to that property. And we've just, we've worked hard to just get everything efficiently moving for that department.
And poor Mark Hayden in the media room, he has generated cash flow positive, coming out of Facebook is not monetized and that's generating dollars. But he's also working on the platforming, once we get the watch hours to generate revenue that will come back from YouTube, which will help offset Public Information Office. And then he has reviewed, he and Greg are working together right now, real time, on reviewing the costs associated with our annualized contract for our app, which has 70-some-hundred people on the app, looking for a more cost-effective solution there. We have been doing 100% of our in-house updates to the website, which is an extreme savings as well. And then on top of that, whether it pans out to be 25 million when they find out the final subsurface scanning of the, what we call the sandbox for bog banks, but grabbing our option to capture the sand loss at PTC number eight is in my estimation, a minimum of $15 million savings, up to a $25 million grab. So just if that one hits, the fact that Mark was here on staff with the drone capability and had flown that pre and immediately post-storm, I saw a comedian say, well, it's priceless. It's not priceless, it's 25 million roughly. So there's another big savings which would help Emerald Isle keep its beaches not only nourished, but to a degree that is substantially better than we would have been without those dollars coming out of occupancy tax, Carteret County tax base and Town of Emerald Isle's tax base. So those are just some of the major wins over the course of the last 36 months. So applaud everyone here and I didn't mean to single out Chief Mathias, everybody's right there. So they're all doing it. I mean, you've had some opportunities, is there's anything you want to address? Are you good? Your efficiencies of your software and what you're uploading or any of the things with your team members, you're more than welcome to address that. Keep taking, Jen's going to keep taking notes so we don't go long.
Any other questions for Laura? Do deeper dives into all that stuff in the coming hours, but any other follow-up questions right away? All right, um, let's take 15 minutes, stretch our legs, some of the drink, bathroom, we'll start back at five minutes to 10. Thank you.
And I are going to work on this one together. So make sure we have what we need here. You should be behind tab number four in your booklet if you want to look at the presentation details at a more granular state. So we'll do that here. So as Laura indicated on our capital improvement plan, one of the items that we need to discuss this budget cycle, last budget was a lot of parks-related repairs and improvements. We've worked through those over the last 12 months and now we're into capital improvement needs and equipment needs for Public Works. So if Mark can go ahead and put that slide up for us, put that PowerPoint up. Thank you. So what we're going to talk about today are the critical operations of Public Works and then we're going to talk about the pieces of equipment. So this isn't information really for the board because I'm sure you're confident in all the things that you see on a daily basis that Public Works does. But for those either tuning in or those that are watching a replay of this, Public Works performs these plus a series of other things. They do asphalt patching and some asphalt repair where they'll cut out a section of road and replace it. We utilize an outside contractor for our multi-mile or multi-lane repairs. But internally, they handle all of our drainage work, our drain cleaning, immediate storm mitigation, debris removal, which you saw that we're making those 34,000 stops throughout the course of the year with our knuckle boom trucks. They do all of our holiday decoration installation and takedown. They do all of our building maintenance and that's one of the other cost savings measures. We've even hired a, a person with former HVAC experience, with former propane installation experience. So we're doing a lot of those things in-house that I can tell you that if you were to survey 10 different municipal locations, you're probably not doing 80% of what this team is doing internal. Beach maintenance, both trash recycling removal and all across the town, you'll see just the example of, can you put those reflectors up? And we'll probably have them up more likely tomorrow, if not by the end of the week. So those are just a general overview of duties and the equipment that's associated with the effective operation of those pieces. So what we wanted to talk about today is the importance of the age of our backhoe, the age of the dump truck, the bucket truck issues, and we're going to have a fork in the road there. And then the replacement process for our knuckle boom truck, which is absolutely needed, but we want to talk about what your choices are. So this is a picture of a New Holland backhoe. Joe went out and secured pricing. These are all state bid prices, so I want to make sure everyone's aware that these are all state bid prices. A JCB quote, which we have the backup documentation for each of these, came in at 165,000, a case at 119. And that New Holland, as you see pictured, is roughly 118,000, which makes the New Holland comparatively the lowest price point if we were to purchase a backhoe and replace it in this next cycle. Our dump truck, which we currently have is a 1995 model and Joe can speak to, I'm going to hand the mic off to him about the most recent repairs and/or the availability to snag or not get parts for it, which is his concern in our current team's problem.
So the 95 International Dump Truck we have, parts are getting harder to secure. Last time we had a turn signal issue, the turn signal and all that was discontinued. You'd have to upgrade that switch, I think it was for like six or $7,000 because they had to go in and change everything. But the most other part of it is the tires. Last time we replaced the back tires, he told us that we're no longer be able to get the tires for it because they're a split rim system and then we'd have to go and change all the rims and tires, just in order to get tires on it. But also the, the rear bed of it's starting to show its age. It's got holes in it, it's rotting out. It's a 95, it's what, 30 years old? And like I said, just parts are getting harder to find and it's getting more difficult to make the repairs on that vehicle.
What do you, Joe, what do you usually use the dump truck for? What's a typical?
So the 21, that particular truck is used for when they go out to do asphaltin' because the sides are lower, they can drop the beds down, put the material that they cut off into the back of that truck. It's used to pull the ditch which. It also helps pull the smaller excavator 32, which is a little bit bigger dump truck. That one's usually used to haul the dirt, the rock, the backhoe and stuff like that.
Did you think about potentially large dump trailers that you could tow? I know we have some other pretty large vehicles that could tow. And the reason I ask is it's obviously much simpler, much less expensive and you could get quite a few dump trailers for $84,000. I don't think we need a lot of them, but have you, have you thought about that?
I mean, we have, we have considered looking into the dump trailer. The issue with that one is though, if you're going to have the dump trailer, then you're going to have multiple vehicles on site then. Because if we're out there pulling asphalt or something like that with 21, at least we have 21 and the trailer there. Now you're talking about possibly pulling in a dump trailer with a pickup truck if the 2500s can pull it. And then you're going to have the piece of dump, other dump truck there with another piece of equipment. So it's just going to kind of bog things up.
Yeah, probably greatly reduce the maintenance challenge. So it's probably, I'll leave it to you guys as experts, but that, that occurred to me that you see a lot of dump trailers, ADC dump Trailers doing asphalt repairs and everything else, not so much here, but over on the other side of the bridge. So something to think about.
Okay.
How, how many do we have dump trucks right now?
Public Works has two dump trucks. So one is a larger one that we go, we haul off to go get our rock and materials, dirt and stuff like that. And occasionally, if it's a larger area, we'll, we use that larger one to obtain a little bit of asphalt if it's more than the four yards that our asphalt trailer will hold.
And, and what's the age of that one?
That one is a 2002, I believe.
So the second dump truck is also on your capital improvement plan for replacement because you traditionally keep these units 20 years. So now you're exceeding 20 years on unit two and you have 30 years on unit one. So these are all state bid prices. What we're looking at is right sizing the piece of equipment. So on Mr. Wooton's plane of thought, the dump truck is large currently today. It's a heavy style equipment, which is often called a two-ton style truck. And Ford has created a new platform called the F600. The F600 is very similar to what you see in Parks and Recreation, which we bought with grant funds and defees that purchase in Parks. And so we would be looking at a similar unit. If you can put the slideshow back up, Mark, to the dump trucks line and we'll go from there. This is a picture of an F600, which would provide you a lower-sided bed. It's going to give the capacity and turning radius that the staff needs to get in and do their job. And what would, we would specifically say to you is this style of truck would have been used on the Bog Sound Court installation, which Chad just referenced, saved us over $10,000 by doing it in-house. They're currently utilizing and will continue to do so cross-departments. So it doesn't matter if it's Parks and Recreation's dump truck, it's Emerald Isle's dump truck. And so when we would have a job that would need three trucks, we would use all three trucks. When we have a job that only needs one and they're working on paving, repairing and replacing asphalt on the bike and ped path, Public Works would be using their truck and the dump truck in Parks and Recreation would be putting out pine straw, mulch and doing what it needs to do. So this is a right-size opportunity, which is reducing the size of the dump truck and a comparable truck would be $150,000 if you replaced the current 95 with what it is. So that's why we're looking at a lesser expensive truck at 84. We're also looking at a 6.7-liter diesel truck, which would give you the towing capacity to do so safely and legally on the highway when it's combined with a pin. capacity to do so safely and legally on the highway when it's combined with a pinno-hitch style trailer, which would have a mini excavator on it, which would be rated at roughly 15,000 pounds plus the weight of the trailer. So it'd give you the acceleration capability, the power and the braking capability in a medium-sized, heavy-duty truck at a cost savings of around $80,000.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, you can get a dump trailer for like $10,000, $12,000. So think about that.
You can. So we've priced those. A dump trailer with a tandem 70,000-pound axle system will run you around 12 to 14, depending on high side. Whether you want a 12, a 14 or a 16-foot dump trailer, absolutely. But the reality is then that trailer still needs to be connected to a truck. And I'm gonna ask Joe, how many current F-350s or 350-1-ton series duly trucks do you have in inventory?
None.
So the problem becomes you need to mate that with appropriate truck to pull it safely so we don't get into an issue. We hear you loud and clear. We'll gladly research it.
The one that we got with FEMA money for Parks and Rec can't pull it?
Yes, well, just to be honest, why would I pull a dump trailer with a dump truck?
Yeah.
So, but that's what I'm just saying. We have two 2500 series, yeah, we have two 2500 series pickup trucks, but they're, as they say, I've been not asking to replace those. Those are 2016s and those are strictly used for the beach, but I, you know, they're only gonna carry that much too. But just also keep in mind too, is with our dump trucks and in the Public Works Department too, if there is a, an emergency or a disaster, those two trucks are out deployed to help and pick up the debris and stuff like that. So I just wanted to put that in the back of your minds also, that they're not just for asphalt or loading rock. They're there for importance if we need them to get out there in a disaster situation and help start picking up debris and stuff like that.
So you want to address your question?
So the bucket truck we have right now, it's down waiting for parts again. Previously, Chad, I think it was what, a year ago, we had it out for a similar issue. It took a while to find parts for it. Finally got them. It was almost six to eight months before we even got it back. Got it back now, used it for the last six months and are in the process of putting up the tree and the banners. The larger cylinder blew a seal out of it. So we had to disassemble that, but the pin that held it in, we had to cut to get it out to get this apart, to get the, make the seals, but that part's not available for, they told us, four to six weeks and it's been about eight weeks now. So the parts for it are just getting harder and harder to find. If we can get the parts and we can make some repairs, an estimate cost to make the repairs to that vehicle will probably be anywhere from $6,000 to $10,000 to get that vehicle up and running to standards. I also know right now for the, I have to have it inspected, but we've been waiting for that. And then I have a upper control for the bucket that needs to be replaced and that's about $15,000 to $2,000 before I can have that vehicle inspected. So we have to have the, I forget what it's called, but for the lift station to be inspected to make sure it's still compliant and usable.
What's the service life of like this bucket truck?
The service life on a bucket truck coming from the electrical industry, if you're running what is considered to be a one-ton or a 550 or a 450 unit, they traditionally run those in frontline usage, five to seven years. So you would amortize that $150,000 over a seven-year cycle. Since we're not in a frontline situation like Carteret Craven Electric, we are a secondary user. So it's used primarily for Christmas decorations up and down, lights changing in parking lots, things like that. So you can utilize a truck that'll be in that 10 to 15-year window. The problem is, we purchased a 2006 truck about four years ago, which is gonna put it 18, headed to 19 years old. So you're at the end of its useful service life. What we talked about doing, you could put a minimum of that $10,000 in it today and hopefully get another year, two or three out of it, not knowing what tomorrow will bring with failure. So if it has an issue or a failure with a human up into the bucket, that's our only concern because we're talking about the safety of the operation. The next choice is to buy a new one on state bid. They start at 150 and go up. The state bid price in which we were seeing was around $167,000. And then a used truck, so if you wanted to find a vehicle that's gonna be five to seven years old, depending on the size, mileage and condition of the unit, the low side is 50,000, the high side will be 100. So if you bought a four-year-old unit, you might be at $100,000. You get a six or seven-year-old unit, you might be at 50. If the cash were available, our recommendation would be to look at purchasing a used truck, selling off the current truck we have to see whatever we can get for it, and then buying something that would be like the unit you see pictured, a 17, 18, 19 model. And that would get us for another five to seven years without major issue. If we can't do that, we're really resorting to two solutions. Repairing this truck and pouring the funds into it or selling it. And before the questions raised, we have talked about in past buying a pull-behind, escalated-style lift vehicle. The stabilization on that in comparison to this truck is nowhere near close. And it takes a lot longer time to, the pull-behind trailer to get positioned, to set down the landing gear, to get it set up, to put you up into the air, to fix that five or 10-minute Christmas decoration. And I won't put Joe or Chad on the spot, but we're currently utilizing the front of the front-end loader safely, which qualifies and meets our standards. But we put you in an apparatus that's connected to the bucket of the backhoe and we pick you up and make those changes today. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
So what I'm sharing with you as a concern is, we probably should at least invest the money to make the repairs and squeak out another year, two or X. Or seriously consider if we can afford to, budgeting for a replacement, good, used unit, monitoring gov deals, contacting Carteret Craven Cooperative again, Duke Energy, or any of our other partners that utilize those frontline trucks and then would be on a capitalization cycle of a five, six or seven-year return. And in that way, you know that they're fully maintenance, that they're coming from electric line work. Any other questions about buckets? We can try to answer them for you. Think outside of the box if you have any other thoughts. We have priced those pull-behind unit, elevation units that you do see. Tree trimmers are using them.
I have a question, and then I'm going back to the backhoe.
You can leave the slide up if you want.
I'm going back to the backhoe. Something I thought of. What do you typically use that for? Is that for drainage cleanup and?
So typically, the backhoe is used to maintain the vehicle access ramps. We go down the beach to fill larger holes, bury, help sea turtles with burying stuff out there if we have to, digging our stormwater systems that we help put in and stuff like that. It does that. And it comes up to another piece of equipment during a debris disaster. It's out there clearing roads and stuff like that. Tree comes down, we have to clear the road for the fire department. If we're not able to get in there, then Billy has permission to go get the backhoe and move it.
I have two thoughts on that. One was, I know we bought a tractor for Public Works a year or two ago.
Parks and Rec, but yeah.
And have you thought about a backhoe implement for that to cover smaller stuff? And what would that cost?
I have not looked into that. That's-
I don't need an answer. I'm just saying something to think about. The other one is, I know the water company needs a new backhoe because I've seen they're sitting in the middle of the road a few times. Have we thought about working a deal with them to share? Because I don't know if we use ours every day and they use theirs every day. I don't think so. So could we maybe pool our resources and get a larger, more capable piece of equipment and work out a deal with them because they're right there?
No, it's never been a consideration. I mean, I know if ours breaks down or theirs breaks down, we, we borrow each other's, but on a daily basis.
Something to think about.
And we didn't think about that. It's just more of having ours on hand for any situation that comes up that it's ready and able to be deployed.
Yep.
Jeff, can you remind us of the size of the new Parks and Recreation tractor, please?
That is actually like a landscaping tractor. It's, yeah, it's more for mowing and doing smaller.
Yeah, I was thinking about for cleaning out culverts and stuff.
No, for cleaning out the culverts, we're actually use the mini excavator because we're in the process of getting a new bucket for that that does that. But that's what, we technically usually don't want to use the backhoe in there because of the bucket type that it has.
Gotcha.
Any other questions on the backhoe?
So this is Larry, everyone. Probably one of the more famous faces in EI. So as you see, he and I think Steven are probably still operating the truck. Is that accurate? Who's on the truck today? Yeah. So you'll either see Larry or Steven making their 180, 200 stops a day around Emerald Isle. So the knuckle boom truck that you currently have, we purchased a Mack unit a year ago because when we ran the analytics 12 months ago, the lease price was so close to a purchase price that I think our annualized debt service payment is approximately $51,400 plus or minus a few bucks. What we're showing is for February of 2026, your current lease will sunset. And what that means is, we'll need to replace that unit. So we're letting you know today that we need to be thinking through, are we gonna do a purchase again like we did with the Mack, run that unit 48 to 60 months? Or are we gonna consider a lease? So we'll run all the analytics because with the changes of interest rates, the leases may be more favorable this time, the purchase may be more favorable. But what you currently had are the replacement of those trucks on a 36-month life cycle. And I would ask Joe to pause and speak about the benefit of being on a 36-month life cycle with a critical frontline piece of equipment versus the downtime of when we had a five or six-year-old unit.
So when we started leasing the vehicles, yes, it's, it's been a great opportunity because after, like we discussed with purchasing the Mack last year, when you get beyond those 36 months into that 48 months and beyond, then you start seeing the pins and more repairs coming up on them. So that's why when they originally started with the lease, it's been a great program. It just, and we found that the booms would start wearing out. We've had actually two booms break or crack in the same position in two different trucks around that five-year mark. So just the maintenance part of it helps tremendously. When you, when you get around that fifth year, then we're just constantly swapping out pins. The boom itself just wears out. Everything wears out in there, even though we change the bushings and we grease it every day and stuff like that. It just, it just really does wear its out. So we find that five-year mark is about the time to start selling it or purchasing or, you know, re-leasing and stuff like that.
So your current payment is rated, I believe, in the debt book on the lease at $49,100 a year, if I'm not mistaken. So if you go through and we get a lease price at $34,500 like we saw three years ago, or $52,000 to buy, it's beneficial lease. If it's not, it's really capitalization over time. I hate even using the term lease anymore because it's been so controversial. It's capitalization over time with a free turn-in. And so if you can lease it for $35,000 to $40,000, capitalize it, use somebody else's equity, turn it in every 36 months, this program has been spotless and flawless and has high dividend for the community. If it comes back that it's $50,000 on a lease term for 36 months, you can buy the unit for a five-year term, it's about $52,000 to $54,000 a year with current interest rates at 4.75. You pay that payment for three years, sell the unit on our own, whatever cash comes back pays the balance of the debt off. So you're either leasing it to yourself or going through a capitalization program on a truck holder. It's six, one, one half dozen of the other, but we know that this is, in our opinion, when we voted internally, this is one of, if not the highest valued services the community receives from EI based on the number of stops it makes in materials. When we'd asked earlier, and we failed to mention to you the cost savings for Mr. Brownlow was the program that we have with Carteret County where we lease the eight acres on 58 in Pelletier for our yard debris site. So we were spending roughly $60,000 to $65,000 a year to dispose of this material with an outside private contractor off of 24. So we cut our travel time, I think a total round trip of about 15 miles. We just run up 58. We used grant dollars to put the fencing in. We use grant dollars to put the driveway in. So Emerald Isle had $0 out of pocket for that. So we have a safe and secured site in cooperation with Carteret County. We take our materials there. We have our Simmons and Simmons contract in position where they come in and tub grind. Year number one was 20,000 to tub grind. The second go around was 25,000. So if you're taking it to your own site and you were paying 50,000 to 65,000 a year to dispose of it, and now you're only paying 20 to 25 to grind it, plus the travel time, plus the fuel time, the net savings is 30,000 a year just in that program alone. And we couldn't have done that without the assistance of Commissioner Farrington, who helped us, put us in contact with Kuswarma and Bobby Darden and their team. So there was 30-plus acres in Pelletier. We've leased eight of those acres. And in return, we've also leased office space to the Shoreline Protection Office. So the difference between what we pay the county or Kuswarma and what the county pays us is $250 a month. So for $250 delta, we get the eight acres. So even when you accompany the lease price for the space, the $0 invested for all the maintenance and fencing and all the things that we've done there, and the time of staff, it's that savings of 30,000. And for Mr. Wooton, I want to point out that we use that backhoe there quite often. And the intention is to not necessarily sell the current backhoe. It's to take the older backhoe, place it at the yard debris site, put the new backhoe potentially on island. And so when a natural disaster hits, then we can go pull asset resource number two and start to clear the roadways, keep the beaches open and get all of our access points cleaned faster. Because with that savings in two years, actually two and a half years, you would pay for the cost of the backhoe. So these are all things that the staff has worked diligently to do to try to put us in a better position in 2025 than we were in 2020. Not that we were in a bad position in 20, but I think our depth of bench, our resources and our ability to respond to disasters is gonna be a little bit more robust today. And I'll let Joe speak to that.
So, yeah. After 20 years or so, I think we have been very blessed with the amount of equipment that our commissioners and staff has let us purchase to make our job a lot easier, a little bit more convenient for us too. So we're not relying so much heavily on outside help. We're, we're, it could be self-assustained. We can get in here, get what we need to get opened up and take care of a lot of stuff. It's just before picking up hand and loading dump trucks by hand for brush. And I think GFL was contracted when I first started here, loading brush in the back of their garbage trucks, if I remember. But just giving this to the community and all that, it's, it's a really big help. The equipment we have and everything helps us out tremendous, helps us do our job more efficient and stuff like that.
So we do have some recommendations for the board to think through. These are just best management practices. You can take any of these recommended actions or zero. We just wanted to bring this all to your attention with all the analytical data that comes with it. So step number one, we would need to make immediate repairs to the existing bucket truck if you determine that you want us to keep it. If you determine that you want us to look for a used or purchase new, then I would not recommend expending the funds to repair it. But if we're gonna keep it, we need to do so sooner than later because we use this unit year-round. Step two is budget for a backhoe. We're estimating that cost to be at 120,000. We would ask that we budget for a replacement dump truck for the large 1995 unit, downsizing the size of the unit to make it more user-friendly at a lower cost and provide greater yield to the community. Step four would be to replace the knuckle boom truck by March of 2026, but we would want to start well before March. We'd want to have those conversations in November and December. And we know that that's gonna be a transitional state from this current seated board. It may have a different makeup by December. So you have to place those orders like you're, this team did a year ago and we made a decision to get the Mack truck that was on the ground. So we want to have the conversation early, but we would need to make some sort of a decision by November or December. But we would want to put in the budget the space holder for that 50 to $55,000 X figure so that it can be adaptable, whether it's a purchase or a lease. We will secure all those prices, but to get them today isn't gonna help you. We need to get them 90 to 120 days out. But we know that the most cost-effective solution will be included in the draft budget and then you can make a decision on, is it a Mack? Is it a freight liner? Is it leased? Is it owned? And we would be able to pull all that. So those are the recommended actions. We also have funding choices for you. So in the funding options, what we would recommend you seriously consider is a backhoe. You can amateurize that on a five-year note. We estimate that'll be around $28,000 a year, just depending upon where the actual interest rate lands. You can include that dump truck on a five-year note. If you finance it over the five-year period, it's 19,000. We also suggest that you can consider paying that cash if the budget supports it. It's a smaller amount. And the replacement of the knuckle boom truck has that current lease already in there. So if you want to accomplish 52, 54,000, which is fine, we can absorb that at a, at a net neutral. So whatever you're currently paying a lease, a $3,000 or $4,000 a month adjustment is marginal in a budget of that size. So we can make sure that you keep that frontline unit rolling. So potentially cash, potentially combination, cash and loan, potentially loan, and then absorption of the knuckle boom. absorption of the knuckle boom are the recommendations in Public Works. Any questions on either the recommendations or the funding options that could help plant the seed for you as you go through the budgetary process?
Questions, right, guys?
Did you say there were some grants available for this also?
No, sir, no grants. We've already exhausted all of our grant work. It's easy to make these decisions when it's, well, it's not 70 today, 38 and sunshiny out versus when it's wind and hail, 100 mile an hour crosswinds, and we're thinking, boy, we wish we would have, could have, should have. So we want to make sure we start this conversation early. If you want to go visit, you want to ride in any truck, you want to operate any piece of equipment, if you want to see the inside workings, we'll gladly bring you there. But again, these are the pieces that what we would say are critical to first response, day-to-day operations and doing the job in a safe manner.
You know, I would like to take, take you up on that. I, I wouldn't want to operate it because I'd probably get in trouble if I did, but, but I would like to, you know, meet with you, you can just show me. I'd like to go to the parts wreck and see like, I heard the tennis courts are cracking already and I'd like to see that, you know, just stuff. I want to see what, I want to see the police cars, you know, just, I think it'd be good. I would appreciate that very much.
Yes, sir, anytime you want.
I heard just someone saying, you know, I got to do my job and my job is to, is ask these kind of questions. I mean, definitely support you guys because I think you do a tremendous job. And I want to support you, but I got to answer to, to my bosses when they ask me questions. And so that's why I'm asking the questions so I can answer them.
Yes, sir.
And, and by me seeing it firsthand, I think that'd be awesome.
We could come by after this if you want, or tomorrow, or anytime this week. You just let me know when you want to come by and we'll make sure somebody's there and, or myself, or I just won't be here next week, but.
Okay.
Mayor, I have a suggestion. You have blank time today and blank time tomorrow. I think it's imperative if one goes, we all go. And that if the board all sees the same data, we could walk to the tennis courts, inspect them together. We could walk right over to Public Works, you can see the equipment. We would gladly accommodate that. That's a great suggestion, just like when we did a year ago when you toured the facilities. We can do so in under an hour, I would suspect.
Looks like we're ahead of schedule.
Boot tour. We can do a boot tour.
I've blocked till noon. I'm assuming everybody else blocked till noon, so unless somebody has something that came up already, we can certainly do that. We're ahead of schedule.
That's to your pleasure. We gladly accommodate you today. If there's anything that's in the field, most of the time it'll come back at lunch unless they've left it on deployment, but we'll check if there's anything that we want to definitely make sure that's there and might give us 30 minutes to get it back there.
I'll be happy to operate.
Yeah, we would love to. So what we're saying is at 11:30, we're going to put the mayor up in the front end of the backhoe to change a flag out. Okay, so we're looking at 11:30, Jason, in a bucket. But we could gladly do that with you and then be still done by noon. That's a great, great question. So our motion or request of the board, whenever you're ready, doesn't need to be today, tomorrow, at a future meeting, we would just need to know if you want us to include in your draft budget a replacement of the backhoe, yes or no? A replacement of a dump truck, yes or no? And it'd be very hard if you didn't replace the knuckle boom, so we would lean heavily into please seriously consider the replacement of the knuckle boom, or we will direct all phone calls to whichever rotating cell phone you would like to establish. Each take a day and we'll just blank them to voicemail on Sunday. But yeah, we need to make sure that the knuckle boom is, is moving and grooving in March when the lease sunsets.
So there's more to come tomorrow, too?
From us, there's police department.
Yeah, so would it make sense to wait and get the full list of everything?
That's up to you all. I mean, PDs are just replacing outdated chargers that the motor blew up with a new car and that's, that's up to you all. I would suggest you do the tour today of parks and Public Works. And if you want to see police cars, they're out there today, so we'll gladly show you.
Correct me if I'm wrong, you're not asking them to approve the purchase of all these equipment. You're just asking for permission to put it on the draft budget, which we discussed again in.
100%. Yes, sir. Our request would be to approve this motion to include it, and you can always cut it, but if we don't include it, it's not in there. But yes, sir, you are 100% accurate. I think we have a series of eight to 10 different opportunities between today and the June X deadline, which normally we do at the second Tuesday in June, but according to legislative authority, you have to approve a budget by June 30.
Also, is it, is one or two public hearings prior to draft, or excuse me, prior to budget adopted? I know it's one.
There's multiple, so we have an early input. Then we present in May, then you have another public hearing in June. So at any open meeting, any public meeting, the, from January to June, in those course of six months, we always take input.
And I was just honoring, Commissioner Wooton had requested, you know, some public comment time for this meeting. I felt it, in my response, I felt it would be good for all the information to be laid out and then we would have five meetings, at least one public hearing, probably two. I do think it's important to hear from the public, but also think it's important for the public and us to have all of this, be able to digest it over time and then everybody can provide meaningful input.
Laura, is the budget calendar included in here? Or do we want to hand that out again?
I don't care that it's made for public, but I think that's.
Well, while, maybe while we're on the walking tour, we'll go get another printed copy of what you approved last month and we'll make sure you have that in the front pouch, which shows all the meeting opportunities in case anybody asks. That's also published as well.
Since this is simply for the draft budget preparation for '25, '26, I'm in favor of providing the tools that staff says that they need and then when we get down to the final processes, making whatever cuts are necessary. So I make the motion that we authorize staff to include replacement of the backhoe, the dump truck and the brush truck, I just hate saying knuckle boom, the brush truck in the draft '25, '26 budget. That's not an approval of anything but a draft.
Commissioner Sanderson has the motion, all in favor. Motion's carried, thank you. Thank you, Joe.
For clarity purposes, if you would like to grab your jacket, what I would recommend is we walk out to the tennis courts, you can visually inspect them. If you want to, if you haven't been, we could, what do we have? Oh, asphalt replacement, yeah. After asphalt replacement, then we could go through the parks and recreation. So if you guys want to notify your teams that we would be there probably by 11, we can walk through the Parks and Recreation Building, then we'll go right over to Public Works. So if you can pull up the asphalt replacement paperwork, Mark, we'll go to that one next. So behind tab number five, you should have a stamped assessment from Crystal Coast Engineering PA, which is John Freshwater, who has for many years helped us with the coordination of our Powell Bill funding map. So we met with John, we verified that we're at 45, almost 45 and a half miles of road. That road is equivalent to 22 feet in Powell Bill width. So if you take and calculate the cost of that roadway by lineal foot, we took our low, our median and our high bid results from this December. We calculated that a low cost per lineal foot is $50. The median estimate is 60 and the high side came in at 75. So if you were to calculate the runout today and you said, we want to replace 100% of Emerald Isle maintained roads, we want to mill them two inches and pave them two inches, your low side cost is 11.8 million. The median or probably most accurate cost would be 14.2 million. And the high side estimate, which is if you were putting this over a 15-year lifecycle and potentially accounting for inflation and you wanted to capture and be the most accurate, hit the bull's eye in year 14 and 15, you're really looking at 18 million. And so in our geographic area, the lifecycle of an asphalt road coast, at least 15 years. So if you were going to attack 1/15th of it this year and then next year, Emerald Isle should be doing at least a million to a $1.2 million of paving per year. And what we are currently receiving is $200,000 in Powell Bill funding. So if our board would like to be the most proactive and aggressive into infrastructure improvement, when you're considering tax reductions or revenue neutral rates, you could allocate whatever dollars, you could allocate whatever cents, however you want to word it. But if from the general fund budget, you were to mate 800,000 with your Powell Bill allocation of 200,000 and pave a million dollars of roadways next year, you would be on target on the low side number of getting 1/15th. But if you really wanted to be the most articulate and forward-thinking, you would go with the median number, which would be dedicating $1 million of local money, mated with your 200 to get you to 1.2 million. So anywhere in there is the conversation of how you would fund road replacement on a capital improvement process. So in our CIP then, if this group decides you want 800,000, CIP shows 800. If you say you want a million, we placeholder a million and then it would say in the right-hand column, Powell Bill plus local, and that's how you would, over the next 15 years, keep all the roads in EI to a top-notch recycle, replacement process at a 15-year cycle. For greater detail, behind there, you have all the roads listed. It's showing in coloration what would need to be repaired and when. And then you have all the listings behind that and a second tab of street listings of Powell Bill streets. It shows you their total, their width, their length. But when you aggregate these dollar amounts, Powell Bill's calculated traditionally on a mile at 22-foot wide width per the engineer. All of that is part of your calculation. Now, is this an exact science to the penny? Please, I'm going to give you a disclaimer, today being the 13th of January 2025, this is the best estimate able to be produced for you based on current market conditions. If fuel prices go out of control and asphalt doubles, you're not going to be close. If fuel prices plummet and asphalt is reduced, which I think would be highly favorable but not probable, then you could do more. But the reality is, I met with our local representative, Mike Lazara, on Friday, and he indicated that the cost per lane mile at the state level has doubled and that if there was anything that Emerald Isle needed to let him know, but to be forward-thinking in our process for asphalt replacement really puts us head and shoulders above other towns. So as you're thinking through this very critical conversation, from what is a former city council person to a state legislator's position is, the number for this cost has doubled and anything we can do locally is going to behoove all of our permanent residents, business owners and specifically tourists that drive that income back to us. Any questions that you have for either Joe or myself pertaining to the asphalt assessment?
Is the new, the recipe for the new concrete is, I mean, asphalt, does it have a longer lifespan than the older concrete? I mean, I keep saying concrete, asphalt.
Not to my knowledge. I know a few years when they did Coast Guard, they were, it was a new mix that they were trying out and I don't think it worked out very well because we've had a bunch of failures on there. So I think it's, they've gone back to just the regular mix that they use, binders and asphalt and oils and stuff like that.
And it's just applied right over top of the existing base?
There is, there are your two options. You can do a resurface, which would go over your old stuff. In the past, I already would request fabric to go over the old existing with tack and then they would put the new asphalt on top of that. It is a little bit cheaper, but the problems we found with that was then if we built the road up, now the water's going in my yard. Why did you do that? So that was one of the downfalls on that part. It seemed to be a little bit better to go in and get the milling done. That way, some of your voids and your cracks were released from there and it was a new base started and we seem to have a little bit better success with that.
And when we're doing the roads, seeing on some, like we're having to put curbs up and...
So some of the curbing would be requested from some residents at the time if the water was, if they were getting a tremendous amount of water on to their property. We were trying to help litigate some of that down to the areas that it would drain off on. There are some pluses and there are some negatives to that.
Does that, does that cover my Powell Bill also?
So I think what you're referring to may be our three most recent curb and gutter projects, which would be Bogan Lit Cedar and how we did those. Those projects were a quarter million dollars apiece. So I want to be clear that this doesn't account for that. This accounts for the actual roadway surface you're driving on the milling and paving, which is 90% or greater of Emerald Isle. And so as you're all aware, hardened structures, all it's doing is moving water from one point to another, putting a greater collection at a certain point versus allowing that road shoulder to drop off, hit a pervious surface and then to, going from impervious to pervious to let it drain in those front yards. From a, from a drainage perspective, the number one thing that EI could and should seriously consider is drain clean, the ditch cleaning and or re-establishment of ditches that have been taken out. So just as EPA states that the best management practice, and Chris can help articulate or reinforce this, is you want a downspout to go to daylight and go over an area of vegetation. You don't want a direct source going to anywhere if you can avoid it. So you want it to dissipate, very similar to your roadways. They're crowned for a reason. They go to the side of the yard and the right-of-way. They go into a ditch where the ditch can hold the water, keep you from flooding, and then the water goes into the subsurface area. There's so many factors there, but where we have put in curb and gutter, we have then ran that to an outsourced location and those three specific sites have all fed in Archer's Creek, where we tried to run that water over some sort of a vegetative material and/or rip raft surface to slow that water, to reduce erosion. Those projects, in my opinion, were so popular, we have people in flat or uphill areas saying, can you get me a curb? And we're like, well, it didn't, it doesn't work that way. So again, to this, it doesn't account for that. Now, there is a full list of items that Powell Bill will fund and we can answer your direct question of will it put in curb and gutter? That's part of a roadway surface. So yes, sir, if you remove a curb and gutter, put it back in, it will cover it. If you're improving a road to put in curb and gutter, it will cover it. It also includes multimodal transportation such as sidewalks. So if you're doing a project and you fix a section of sidewalk, it'll cover parts of that. It will not cover paving parking spaces. So we have to repair these parking spaces in here. You can't use your Powell Bill funds for that. So while we're bidding our project, we're using local dollars to fix these parking spaces. So the roadway that's dedicated, that's on the map, is accountable. Anything off the roadway would not be. Does that help a little bit more? There's a full list. We can even pull it up and show you online. We can type in Google, Powell Bill approved expenditures and it'll show you everything. There's legislation that says what you can pay for.
Yeah, I think that would be very helpful to have itemized.
Yeah, we can give you that in the next 10 minutes.
And actually, on several of the departments, I think I'd like to see itemized and that way I can, you know, answer to my constituents.
What else would you like to see itemized? We'd gladly help you with it.
We can just, I'll have a list for you, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would say the sources of revenue is one thing that popped in my mind, but I know that comes as part of the process. And I'm, I think I'm the one that put out the paving requirement to talk about this. And we're never going to get caught up if we only pay, if we only spend Powell Bill money, so we need to start sometime. This may not be the best year to start with all the other uncertainty around what's going to happen with the valuations and insurance costs and everything else, but we got to start sometime. So I'd love to see us put some plug number, at least in the capital improvement plan that says, put a marker out there that says, we're going to spend some local money to improve the worst roads first and then figure out from there how that plan plays out, whether it's over a 15-year cycle or 20 or something else. But if we don't start now, we, you know, we got to start sometime. And I think one thing I hear about particularly from folks down on Town Drive is continuing complaints. And I know we patch small areas where those small areas, like that's much better, but I still hear grousing about that, as well as out on the east end of town, some of those, I don't, they just look sunbaked to me, but they're, they're in pretty rough shape. So I think that's something we need to consider. And obviously, we got to balance it with everything else and pavement is not sexy or interesting, but it's one of the fundamental things that governments are supposed to do.
So Jay, in your, in your binder, there is the list that Chad and I went out and did of what, where streets are, what the lifespan of them are.
I'd love to go through that with you because I didn't understand it 100%.
Okay.
Maybe we could ride around and look and, and see those. That would be super helpful. I know you guys are on it and I don't have to be on it and I, clearly you guys have prioritized stuff. And I obviously start with the worst, but yeah, we got to start somewhere.
Yeah, so like, I mean, just quickly, I could go over here. So anything that's like in the green, we have like a, that scaled one to two, you'll get 10 or plus years. Those are going to be your most recently streets that have been done within the last five years. There's two greens, so then the ones that are listed two to three, those are your five to 10-year things. Three to five years, which is yellow, that scale is three to four. We can hopefully get three to five more years out of those that, there's cracks or, you know, some little minor potholes. And then zero, the one, which is the three, those are the ones that need immediate attention. those are the ones that need immediate attention. So like, for instance, like Hickory, that, that's a four to five, that needs to be replaced. And I added that one.
Didn't we just do that?
Coming up. Yeah, that one's coming up. That's on the bid to get done. When we had a few extra dollars, I went back out and found a couple other ones that we could possibly get away hopefully with this year. But like Matt said, between that time and this time, to me, it seems like the numbers went up a little bit higher. But I can only do one more road after the, that, and I think it was Terran Terrace is desperately needed. So we'll do that and.
And then the other factor is the more you do it once, the cheaper it is. So you have to load balance how you're contracting for at a time to drive your price. I get how complex it is. Probably why I'm not in asphalt. But like I said, I just want to put it out there as something that we got to start sometime.
And I agree with you on Sound Drive. There are areas that dip and there are areas that good. It's just, as you know, that's why that would take some capital, like you said, a plan to do that. If we want to do, do the whole Sound Drive, which would be in my world, the perfect thing to do. But that's why I'm trying to find the worst spots and, and get them taken care of before they get any worse.
Good question for you, Joe. I know, just kind of relating it to like our engineered beaches. But if you think of like our roads, like an engineered road in the sense for permeable and goes back to stormwater, when all that was going on about two years ago, we were talking about the town's responsibility for water runoff with the roads and stuff like this. It's a great opportunity to look more into ways that we can help with the stormwater around our town. And I was wondering, as we've been talking and listening and talking about grants, have y'all been able to look into, I know having a, a road that the water can leak through and work on is a lot more expensive. There's issues with weight for trucks being on and all these other factors that I've learned over the last couple of years. But is there a way to do like grant money that would help pay for some of our roads if we followed into a program where the roads were more stormwater friendly, I guess, to say, in the sense that the asphalt we're putting down is going to cost more, but in the same sense as a way that we can help pay for our roads to cover that cost? Just shooting that out there.
I, I don't think there's any grant money out there. I'd be happy to try to look into some things and see if we can come up with something. But as far as I have ever seen, I've never seen any grants for it.
Is the same process required for porous asphalt as for porous concrete when it comes to maintenance? The sand?
The sand is what we find to be the issue. Also, then if you do that, then there, I know there's, from what I was told and what I've seen, there's maintenance to that. Also, you have to have cleanouts. Then I think we have to get a vac truck, I believe it is, not my vac trailer, but we'd have to get like a vac truck to come in and vacuum out that porousness on a scheduled basis.
It also depends on the soil suitability under the, the base too.
Yes.
And then I think that soil, if we put too much to a particular area, could have unintended consequence, could it not? Not just failure into the road. So this could be a water table issue. So Mr. Taylor, I believe with high probability, there's, there's no grant dollars available for that outside of small pilot projects. And so that's the one thing that we've applied for in FEMA 428 mitigation would be to move that stormwater from 214 to 16 Cedar up into and under the roadway surface. That for us is a beta test. It may have both intended and unintended issues there. The second is, there's 550-plus municipalities in the state of North Carolina. They're all wrestling with this conversation. There won't be additional dollars outside of Powell Bill. That's the mechanism. So unless the legislature provides some sort of a one-timer or, and you know, now we're dealing with, they created a whole nother division called Grow, which impacts the resiliency and operation for the Western North Carolina impacted communities, that 25-county zone. The reality is, you're on your own when it comes to asphalt. Your local tax dollars or opportunities to fund it are going to be on our own. So to be forward thinking, we would say that if a new penny becomes a half a million dollars and you want to dedicate 1.5 cents or 750,000 per cycle, as Mr. Wooten indicated, whatever that dollar amount is, whether it's 200, 500, 750, 800, a million, whatever you deem, we would budget for, collect, dedicate those dollars to and make that improvement. Now, the next board can change it, but you have that authority in this cycle. Mr. Brownlow asked for, what does the list look like? We'll print this for you. Mark pulled it up. And it's, unless you read extremely fast, it's four pages, so he can just scroll through. These are some of the things that you can use your Powell Bill funds to do. And then I also think they give you a do not list. So there's just different things you can do. But we'll go ahead and print that and have it at your workstation. So if PD can help us or we'll print it to across the street, we'll staple it top left and hole punch it. So you can put it in your binder behind this. We'll do that for you as well.
PDF it, please.
You want a PDF as well?
Yes, please.
Well, the whole packet will be available and uploaded as a PDF. So at the end of the meeting, you'll be able to just download that PDF too, if that's okay. Any other questions on that? Because that's getting us close to your boot tour.
Do you want to have anything else?
All right, do you, Mayor, do you want to take a 10-minute refresh and we'll get ready to roll at 11 o'clock?
Yeah, that's good.
Hard stop at noon?
Yep.
Okay.
Mark, are we good? We're good.
All right. Thank you to all the department leaders for taking us around for that tour. You see that stuff driving up and down the road and whether it's what you think it is or it's not, until you get 10 feet away from it, it definitely gives a different perspective. So thank you all for doing that, and I hope it was helpful to our budget decision makers, regardless of what y'all decide to do or not do. You had some additional information that you compiled right before we went to break that you want to share?
Yes, sir, absolutely. So appreciate you all taking the boot tour. You had asked for an additional hard copy of your budget calendar. That should be in front of you, not telling you what to do, but giving you an option. You may want to just stick that in the front pouch of your budget booklet so that you have it for easy reference. If you're choosing to three-hole include it, we've already pre-hole, three-hole punched it for you. The other piece was, you had asked about what is permissible on the Powell Bill program. So we went ahead and the Powell Bill is in codified ordinance 136-41.1 through 136-41.4. And a copy of that document has been provided to you, two-sided stapled. And if you would, I'd ask that you may want to consider putting it at the back of tab five. So you're going to have the engineer's assessment, you'll have the roadway listing, and you'll have the prioritization provided by Public Works. And now you'll have your Powell Bill program data all included there, which tells you what you can do from stabilizing and grading all the way in through page three and four, talking about traffic control purposes and, you know, payments to contractors and the like. So all that information on Powell Bill is there. The other piece that was asked, we heard, maybe we didn't, you didn't make a specific request, but we were able to do some quick estimations based on our road lengths that you have. If you chose to, for example, wanted to make a big splash into the conversation and wanted to mill and pave all of Sound Drive in this next cycle, that road's a little bit north at 2.1 miles plus or minus. And we, I think in our listing, we told you that when we calculated lineal footage, I don't want to get it wrong, Emerald Isle has approximately 237,600 feet of roadway when you calculate the 45 and a half miles into foot. We took the foot length, which is that 2.1 miles plus or minus, ran it against a $50 a lineal foot, the 60 and the 75. So you could go out for bid, it may come in at 569, it may come in at 682, it may come in at 853. Now it may come in lower, it may come in higher. But this would give us, this is how we calculate when we're preparing to do a bid document set. We identify 10 roads. We have $200,000 and we say, oh, well, it looks like it may only get us to road seven. But we bid eight or nine or 10 roads to see if we can come in under. And so what we did in this last particular cycle, we bid out roads, we sent a feeler note out. And one of the contractors was kind enough to send us a number back. So we got a good number about where we were. And then when the bids went out, it actually came in below the low number. So that's how come we're today adding Turn Terrace, I believe is the next available and highest road in demand. But you wanted a Sound Drive estimate, and this is the best we could do for you. If in a 60-minute window is 570, 682, and 853.
Anybody have questions for more? Matt on that, I'm sorry. Thank you for getting that together.
Sure. Thank you to Public Works. They knocked it out. Mayor, if there's no other questions, we could just ask what you liked about today. If you want to make any adjustments for tomorrow, we are set and ready to go again for an 8:00 AM start. And breakfast would be available, I believe, tomorrow again at 7:30.
Yes, sir.
Is there anything that you would want to see us do or prepare for you we have this afternoon?
Same bacon.
Same bacon. We'll work on that. Bacon apparently is a hit.
Final thoughts, questions, what you like, what you didn't like, what, we want to make sure we don't miss tomorrow that's not already on the agenda, anything like that?
A couple of notes I just took, if it take a second. First off, I saw, I want to thank Mark Cruz again. I was just, that money we saved. And with so many, we, about six months ago, I was at, and a lady that was doing the study for our beach or something. And she talked about the, about the beach and how, how much it helped. So I was thinking about that, you know, that old saying, a picture's a thousand words. A video's got to be worth a million as far as what it did. And we're saving us 15 to 25 million dollars on the beach sandwich. Everybody comes there for the beach. I mean, no joke aside, that's what they're here for is the beach. So that was really cool. I had a question about Chief Billy on the Fire EMS transportation. Are we still doing that? Will you pay that $50 and $60 for a family and stuff? Is that still going on?
Subscription.
Subscription program? I was just curious about what's still happening. I thought it was a great program.
That is correct. We do have that program still in place. It runs fiscal year to fiscal year. And it is $50 for up to two people. Additional is $10, $10 per person.
I was just thinking it might be a good time again to, and you might have already done it, I might have just missed it, but make, maybe get up with, use Mark again to make a, one of those good videos that kind of pronounces out a little bit. I remember how much money we were getting back, covering, helping cover some of the costs when people's insurance don't pay or stuff like that. But I thought it was a great program, so might make a good chance to put Mark to work again on some of that stuff.
It was a great idea to send out the mailer right at the renewal times, right before.
Yeah, so that was discussed at the officers' meeting last month. And so working towards that, moving forward, any changes we need to do in those presurers before they head out for this next fiscal year.
Yeah, I think that's a great program, especially for our aging community and stuff. I think it's a good all the way around. I mean, ambulance cost, a couple of years ago, my wife had to do something. It was like, we had insurance too, and I think it still costs us $500, $600. So it's a, it's a good program to, to go for and stuff. Let's see here. Oh, and then what kind of jumped out to me today, I just notes, talked to the board and stuff a little bit about is, we save a lot, you're talking about money saving and stuff. We save a lot of money in-house work that's done. So to all you heads of departments and stuff, you know, it's real important to hire the right people, as you all do. And then you know to even save more money, you know the programs that are coming up in ahead are things that we want to do in the next three or four years. So as a, as an opportunity opens up to hire a new person, you know, look for that person that can, that might be a, ask, you know, knows how to pave roads or something. I'm not saying we're going to pave roads, but in that same sense, you can, you hire the right person to do the, the job in-house. We can save a lot of money doing that kind of stuff. So to me, if we don't have, if we don't give the, the staff the right equipment, like if this board decides not to go with a tractor, whatever it might be, or a dump truck, then, then that money saving, doing it in-house is going to go away because we're not going to have the right equipment to do it, and we're going to have to hire it out. So that, that's, that's the part I see is hiring the right people, making sure that we pay them a decent wage and that we hire quality people, and then we give you the right equipment to do it. That's kind of what jumped out to me today, but I just sit back listening and liking it. And I think it was very helpful to do the walk around and see the equipment. And when you see a rust hole in the side of a dump truck or, or a hose leaking hydraulics, you know, we don't do day-to-day operations. So for me, seeing that stuff and knowing you're dealing with it and you're putting some duct tape on it, trying to patch it up to make the next week or next day with it is important. So thank you. That's all I got.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else?
Great job, staff. Continue tomorrow.
Question to adjourn?
All in favor? See you guys in the morning. Thank you.
Thank you.